Recording in progress.
All right. I will open the public hearing on Bill Number 42-25. Before I begin, I would like to remind everyone that you must sign in and state your name and address before you speak, even if you've already spoken. And I would also like to remind everyone that we may not agree with something that a speaker says, but we need to keep decorum. So please keep your comments and reactions quiet to yourselves so that we can, and we have time for everybody to speak who wishes to speak. Also, one last thing. If someone is speaking and says exactly the same thing you want to say, please try not to be redundant in your comments. All right. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of the bill? Please sign in and state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Robert Lewis. I live 53201 Walnut Road, New Carlisle. I'm Randy's neighbor. I'm speaking in behalf of Randy. I've known him for about 70 years. Randy has been a super neighbor. He's a friend to everybody I know. He's a good steward of the land. He's worked hard for the last 50 years to make payments just like every other farmer. He was approached, he didn't approach anyone, he was approached to sell his property. It's his right. He's been in debt, like every other farmer, most of his life, and this is a way that he can be debt-free and live out the rest of his life comfortably. In those respects, I wish everyone else would respect his wishes too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Mark Rolfes, 1122 Quigley South Bend, and I am president of Hoosier Conservative Voices, and we are in favor of the zoning changes before each night. We make this recommendation, however, with reservations to acknowledge the concerns raised by many. Changes in strategic decision-making will provide a better result for the community. This project will provide a huge economic boon for the area. Take a drive around Indiana. Towns that have had a factory closed or refused new development projects become ghost towns. Don't take it for granted. The improved county economy happens because we have said yes to new development opportunities, not because we have turned them down. I want to focus on the economics. Big projects like this must be win-win-win for all segments of the community. Residents of the New Carlisle area are correct that their area of the county has carried the brunt of many large development projects over the past three years. These areas have not shared adequately in the rewards. We view this as unfair. County government is a clear winner. Since January 2023, the county cash balance has risen from $77 million to $140 million, an average surplus of $21 million per year, representing 59% of total expenditures, almost triple the 20% gold standard for government. But the county has structured the GM and Amazon deals so that all of the new property tax revenue goes to the county, and none has gone to the local government units. Any new data center project must be structured so that a larger portion of the property tax revenue goes directly to Olive Township, New Carlisle, and the New Prairie School District to be used on projects of their own choosing. The Amazon data center and GM battery plant have not generated tax relief. Instead, county property taxes have increased rapidly, especially in New Carlisle, where one of seven homes have had their property taxes double in the past three years. The final deal for the new data center must provide direct tax relief for the homeowners. It should be no surprise that people in New Carlisle are staging a revolt. So far, it has been win, lose, lose for them. But the answer is not to say no to new development projects. The answer is to move forward tonight and then make sure that county officials share the property tax benefits with local governments and the taxpayers. I wasn't in favor of the new data center, but we did get a new community center out of it. It paid for the school expansion. I like the improvements to downtown New Carlisle. I wasn't in favor of it, but I like the $200 property tax rebate check I just got. So if the county starts sharing the tax revenue, I think the opposition will soften, as we'll change this to a win-win-win proposition. And the other winners will be the hero construction workers, electricians, carpenters, and plumbers who make all of this happen. We can do this data center, and we can all win. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rolfes.
James Gardner, 1001 North Michigan Street, Lakeville, Indiana, representative of the International Union of Operating Engineers and part of the state building trades, as well as the local St. Joseph Valley Building Trades. What I've seen from these various projects, that we may not have seen the revenue come in yet, we know it's going to come in, is the outreach and the correlation and the collaboration with the University of Notre Dame and various schools such as Penn, such as South Bend Schools, as far as outreach to the young men and women out there that are seeking a different path, that may not, you know, college may not be for them. And due to these projects, I can tell you that it is projected with the operating engineers, over the next five years, we will bring in locally 125 apprentices alone, just for my craft. I, I think we need to continue looking in that direction, but I will say this, that I respect everyone up there at the council. You guys have asked the tough questions here today. You're taking consideration of everything. And I think passing this zoning here to give us the opportunity to look at compromise, negotiations, which is what we as unions do, to find common ground and fair and equitable, maybe both sides aren't happy, but it's a fair, understanding agreement. I look forward to working with the residents of New Carlisle. If we get the zoning and we start doing an economic development agreement, I have a lot of knowledge in that. I sit on various boards with the county of Elkhart and the city of Elkhart, appointed by Tim Neese. That's a message to some of you on the board. I think we need to sit there and step back and put somewhat emotions to the side. I understand it's very taxing. It's been a lot of stuff that's put out there, and I think it's, it's hard to say that documents by the DNR and other state and federal regulatory, that's not anecdotal, that's fact. Signed petitions that were shown by the developer, that's not anecdotal, that's fact. It's a narrative of both sides, and we need to reach across the aisle and figure out how to do this to fix many things. I stated in a press conference this week, we are on the pinnacle of change that I think this entire country needs. Too much toxic environments, too much ideology, not common sense Hoosier thoughts, that we can work things out together. We don't have to be so adversarial. We don't have to see some of the things that we're scared of, that we're seeing, where politicians are being threatened in certain ways. You are elected leaders. We need to trust you. But at the same time, you need to trust the people at this mic on both sides. But I do encourage you to at least give us that chance to start by voting yes for the rezoning. Let's start that dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Good evening. My name is Murray Miller. I'm the business manager for the Labor's Local 645, offices at 23698 Western Avenue. We are in the construction industry. I am in support of the rezoning bill for a number of reasons. A lot of them have been touched on, employment with the laborers. This project going through, we're probably going to bring in 200 to 300 new apprentices. We've brought in a lot of them this year from the New Carlisle area and across our five counties. This project will also offset some of the, I'm going to call it a paycheck tax, because that's what it's going to be. That's where the SB1 allows the municipalities to tax the paycheck. For those who don't know, that's going to be a direct burden on the taxpayers, who already has a large burden. So I think this would also help offset some of that. The, all the other benefits, you know, we talk about travelers coming in, the travelers will come in, but St. Joseph County has benefited from the, the hotel motel tax, so some, at least $10 million, that's going to various projects around St. Joseph County, to help build those at no taxpayer expense. So I am in favor, and I'd ask you guys to vote yes tonight on zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Jason Piantek, Assistant Business Manager with IBW 153, with offices located at 56475 Peppermint Road. Good evening, council members. I stand before you today to express strong support for Bill Number 4245. This is not just a vote about a single project or a specific end user. It is a vote, a vote about zoning, about how we plan for the future of St. Joe County. Zoning decisions are the foundation of economic development. They determine whether our community can adapt to changing industries and attract investment that sustains growth. Bill 4245 proposes a shift from agricultural to industrial zoning, a change that is creating opportunity, opportunity for infrastructure, for jobs, and for long-term stability. Why focus on zoning rather than the end user? Because zoning sets a stage for what is possible. The framework we establish today will guide development for decades. Industrial zoning opens doors for advanced facilities, technology hubs, and manufacturing sectors that bring high-paying jobs and tax revenue without overburdening, overburdening public services. We've seen the impact of similar decisions before. In Local 153, in the past year, we've grew over nearly 25%, and apprenticeship programs have tripled in size, creating careers, not just jobs. Over 1,900 electricians work on related projects, boosting local businesses and strengthening our skilled worker, our skilled workforce. These are tangential benefits that ripple throughout our economy: housing, dining, retail, all supported by thoughtful zoning policy. Approving Bill 4245 positions St. Joe County to continue this momentum. It's about planning smartly, ensuring our land use aligns with our future needs, and giving our community the tools to thrive in a competitive economy. So let's keep the focus where it belongs, on zoning, on strategic growth, and building a stronger future for St. Joe County. I urge you to protect property rights and vote yes on Bill 4245. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piantek.
Hello, I'm Keith Wilkinson. I'm at New Carlisle, well, actually, I got to tell you my address. I live at 32856 Cardinal Court, New Carlisle, Indiana, Stone Oak Estates. I'm currently working on an AWS project. I've been an operating engineer for 35 years. I've been working on the Amazon project for almost two years. It's a mile from my house. People say that the Amazon project is, first off, they said we're building on the wetlands. Well, actually, what happened was, we moved a road too close to the wetlands, and what they considered the wetlands was an area of the farm he couldn't farm. He parked his junk equipment there. So now that we've gone through and dug the retention ponds, all the retention ponds on that job site are lined with five feet of crushed 53 limestone compacted, two feet of sand, and then a rubber liner, and then a foot to two feet of top soil, and then they planted native grasses, they planted native plants, and native flowers. Also, like everybody else out there, the traffic is crazy. I actually got T-boned trying to leave work one night. So I understand the town's frustration with the traffic out in the area. I do understand that. But I am for the project. Also, I heard people talking about the 240 acres, that instead of zoning that industrial, why don't you just zone that something different and give it to the town of New Carlisle to do with what they see fit? I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson.
Bob Byers, Business Manager for Ironworkers Local 292, here in South Bend, Indiana, 3515 Bowlin Drive. I'm here tonight in support, asking you guys to support the rezoning. We have, with the projects that are going on currently, we have over-doubled the size of our apprenticeship, and we look to do the same again if this project, if this gets rezoned and goes through. It's, it's good paying jobs out there, and there's lots of, lots of our members that are out there right now that are local to St. Joe County. So I urge you to, to vote yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Byers.
Donald Taber, 58010 Apple Road in Osceola. I'm here to speak in favor of the rezoning on behalf of trades workers all over our county and our community. It's, should be more than obvious to anybody that travels the county what happens when we lose industry or don't, don't take advantage of situations like this. My entire lifetime, my career, almost 30 years with sheet metal workers, we have not seen an opportunity come to town that can create this much revenue for our county. And then the tax burden that's on the, each and every resident throughout the county can be offset by bringing jobs like this to town. Not just the temporary for the construction workers, but the long-term for the permanent hires at these organizations, at these businesses. Indiana has an opportunity of growth here, specifically in our county, that's not seen across the entire country at this time. So I would encourage all of you to vote in favor of this rezoning to help every member of this county out. And thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Klein. I'm a business representative of IU OE Local 150. I'm here to speak on behalf of my 1,300 members. This is a great opportunity for St. Joe County for economic growth. It's a good opportunity for good-paying jobs, excellent opportunity for these young individuals coming out of high school to get into the apprenticeship program. I encourage you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Hi there. My name is Owen Bender, and I live in 604 Barn Street, Osceola. I'm a member of the Local 150, International Union of Operating Engineers, and I am here to ask that you vote yes for this data center. The job site has helped me support my young family with steady work and great benefits. Mr. Sett, Mr. Shetzel, I was your student at Penn High School, and the trades came to our school with the building trades program and opened up a gateway to the workforce at a young age. I was accepted to the operating engineers, Local 150, at 19 years old, with no student debt, making great money. This is only possible through the economic developments like these projects. Thank you for your time, and please vote yes for Bill 4245. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bender.
Good evening. Mike Lita, IBW 153, 56475, Peppermint Road, South Bend, Indiana. I just wanted to let you know that this, this project has not only a lasting impact of the economy, but our local IBW economy alone. We've been able now to move forward and purchase a building so we can establish a clinic for a membership that we would never be able to do. This is, this is unprecedented in the area. We'll be able to have medical staff for our clinic to work on our members, and they can go there and have at no cost to them. Why? Because of the economic benefits of all the work we have right here. We also do a lot in the community that is because of the, all the work we do. We do Rebuilding Together. We do Stuff-A-Bus food drives. We help out with the centers of the homeless. I have countless of many little, little league baseball teams, softball teams, we support all throughout the area. So why can we do this? Because of the amount of work we have in this area. So I'm asking you, please, to continue this momentum we have building here and vote for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lita.
Hi, my name is Chad Barrier. I'm a labor, Labor's Local 645. I've been doing this for 15 years. It's been a great job. Everything I've ever been involved in was a positive outlook. I see apprentices coming up, and I, I see something that everybody needs here. They need a great new beginning, and some coming out of high school. The whole New Carlisle projects and Amazon facilities has created that for these gentlemen and young ladies. It just keeps them busy. It keeps the mind not, you know, not on idle. It keeps everybody flowing money in the right direction. And I'm just very positive thoughts over this situation. And if you could please vote, vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrier. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there a hand up there? Mr. Corman.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
President Shetzel and fellow council members, Steve Corman with addresses at 4830 Portside Drive, South Bend, Indiana. It's getting very late, so I want to thank all of you for hanging in there and keeping your eyes open. And Randy, thank you for not falling asleep, too. I'm speaking as a 70-year resident of St. Joe County, a small business owner, and a home builder. I'm speaking cautiously in favor of the rezoning tonight with five main points. Point number one goes to the residents and the water wells of New Carlisle and Olive Township residents. I heard the attorney say that they plan to use a closed-loop system, unlike what Amazon did, where they did not use a closed-loop system. But I did not hear a firm commitment from the attorney, and I'd really like to hear that they will commit and stick with a closed-loop water system to protect everybody's wells, no matter if the cost gets too high, and even though Amazon was not required to do a closed-loop system. Point number two, as you know, because the Amazon data center being built, our roads in Olive Township are being, seeing a lot of abuse. And with all the traffic, we're having safety issues. Having built over 10 different residential subdivisions in St. Joe County, this huge influx of construction activity, I believe, is a temporary phenomenon. Within 24 to 36 months, things will settle down and not be such a major issue for local residents. Every subdivision we've ever built was chaotic the first three years. That's just the very nature of construction, that you're going to have more traffic on the road. But after the two to three years, then things do seem to settle down and go a lot better. Point number three, I'd like to see a commitment from the petitioners that if the data center never happens, for whatever reason, maybe you guys don't give them tax abatement, maybe you can't get together on a mutually acceptable economic development plan, that they would commit, if the data center doesn't happen, that they would commit to coming back to the St. Joe County Council and starting the rezoning process all over, so that that 1,100 acres of land couldn't become some type of large, heavy industrial user that would hurt the residents of Olive Township and the town of New Carlisle. And point number four, I'd like to see, on the comprehensive plan, it's a great comprehensive plan overall, but the one area they missed is the fact that the Indiana Torrid runs right along the north part of St. Joe County, and all towns along the Torrid have tried to utilize, tried to utilize the Indiana Torrid, which eventually New Carlisle will want to use the Indiana Torrid as well.
Mr. Corman, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I am going to try to stick to the three minutes, because we have so many people who want to speak. So at three minutes, we will ask you to stop. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak in favor? This is in favor. There is a hand up at the top. Can anybody see that for me? Alex?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and speak, Alex. Give you your name and address for the record, and go ahead.
Alexander Sanova, 1326 South Spring Street in Mishawaka. I'm an ironworker with Local 292 out of South Bend, Indiana. As a union tradesman and as a St. Joe County resident myself, I'm in favor of the rezoning to support this data center being built, for a couple of reasons, you know. One, obviously, the tangible for me, being a union member, being employed currently at the Amazon Data Center in New Carlisle, it brings a lot of high-paying jobs to the area. Also, the tangible benefits for the community. The labor representative speak earlier, earlier about the hotel taxes that are being paid. That's also not counting all of the boon to the small businesses in the area, the restaurants in the area, the other revenue that it's bringing in on sales tax. Also, just, I had heard someone speak earlier that each building was going to employ approximately 50 people. So I did the math. 50 times 14 is 700 jobs that it's bringing to the area, with an average annual salary of around $100,000 a year, just based on a simple Google search, which would be about $70 million a year, times a 1.75% county income tax rate for St. Joe County, would bring in $1.225 million a year, just in payroll income tax for the county. A lot of you board members were asking about the immediate tangible effects. That's an immediate tangible effect for the county. Obviously, with the abatements cutting into the other profits, you're still going to see an immediate profit right off the bat. Not only that, but I heard some talk about the employment, whether they're going to be remote jobs or not. Also, a simple Google search, 273,000 approximate residents in St. Joe County with an unemployment rate of 4.3% means that we have 11,739 people available right now for those jobs. Whether or not they all stay local or not, I still think that'll help get our unemployment rate closer to a net zero. And I really feel like, with all these benefits, we'd be silly to not vote yes for this rezoning and the opportunities that it brings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sanovo. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak in favor? Roth's? Is that? Nope, they went away. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak in favor? Ross? Can you hear me?
Yes, I've, I've got you. My name's Ross Higginbotham. I'm at 1110 North Michigan Street in South Bend, Indiana. I'm, I'm in favor of this. I just got done spending two years working for AWS. I left there in 2023. I was actually helping them build data centers. I had nothing to do with the project here in town. But I can say from, you know, from that perspective, that I, I've seen so many communities like our own, like this community that I grew up in. I grew up out on the west side of town, on the west side of South Bend, out off of Quinns Road. And, you know, I, I see this thing going up, and, and I know there's going to be a lot of computer engineering jobs. We've heard from all the unions talk about all the great blue collar jobs that we're going to get out of this, but the white collar jobs that are going to come in as well, the, the, the way that helps support the community. And currently, I work in real estate education. For every white collar job that comes in, it takes three blue collar jobs to support it, according to the Housing and Urban Development Committee. So for every one of those jobs we bring in, we, we just bring in more. And, and I want to see our community thrive. I want to, I want to see it. I don't want people to have to leave like I did at the age of 20 because they couldn't find good work and, and it have, you know, take 20 years for them to move in.
Okay. Thank you, Ross. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Okay. We'll move on then. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Please sign in, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, President Shetzel and members of the council. My name is Molly Hannan. I'm at 127 East Michigan Street, New Carlisle, and I'm the New Carlisle Town Representative for the Area Plan Commission. There are four of us from the Area Plan Commission that will speak to you this evening, myself, Derek Dieter, and there are two online. I would like to first address the petitioner's representative and thank him for giving me the opportunity to exemplify the use and function of the comprehensive plan. He referred to me voting yes for the Hedgecroft project on 20, and how it deviated from the comprehensive plan. However, I asked a lot of questions and had a lot of discussion during that meeting, and we went from a medium-density residential designation on the comprehensive plan to a medium-density housing development with an added commercial component. So we effectively changed three levels of zoning on a portion of the property. In contrast, changing what is the agri, intense agricultural land for the project that's brought up tonight will effectively change zoning by seven levels. The seven levels go from, sorry, my son was texting me, agricultural district, to the single-family district, to the R2 residential district, to the office buffer district, to the office district, to the business district, to the commercial district, and then to the industrial district. Once ag land is changed zoning-wise, Once ag land is changed zoning-wise, it is a permanent and irrevocable change. It is a lion eating a lamb. That is an example of how the comp plan is, in fact, a living and breathing document and not a dead document. A dead document would be black and white and have no flexibility and only impending failure. The beauty of the New Carlisle Comprehensive Plan is that our town residents, business participants, local government help create this vision with the foresight for future generations as well as the quality of life for present citizens, both the ones that live in town and in the county. The 2040 New Carlisle Comp Plan was created not in a vacuum, but rather to coincide and have a similarly collective, shared vision as a 2045 St. Joe County Comp Plan. We at Area Plan voted this project down unanimously at Area Plan, and that was even with an unprecedented no recommendation from the plan staff. When we voted Area Plan, we heavily reference the comprehensive plan documents, and we vote based on the state-mandated criteria. Please, council, consider New Carlisle's future past the data center boom that will inevitably pass and consider the future landscape of our town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Derek Dieter, county surveyor, former city councilperson, former commissioner. So one thing you all need to clean up, which isn't possibly your fault, the only thing the people out there and downstairs got to see, which is you guys. So that camera pointing to you, they didn't see the data, they didn't see the maps, and they didn't see any of the speakers. So whenever you do that next time. Several things are quite disturbing to me. One, I don't see Mayor Mueller here. I don't see Mayor Wood. I don't see Commissioner Baxmeyer. I don't see Commissioner Hazen because they thought it was so important to do a letter and to do a press conference because they're so in touch with the community, they couldn't even show up to hear the public on one side or the other. Secondly, I think Jimmy and 153 and all the union, union people are awesome. They work hard. They make this county go, but I'm going to disagree with them on this subject matter. Is the attorney who was up there for two and a half hours or so, is he gone? Do you know? No, it's a serious question because I want to know.
Mr. Dieter, direct your comments to the council, please.
Okay. Mr. Schatzel, will you ask him if you see him again, where he got the 100 or 1,000 signatures and if any of those people are here? Apparently, they're not because nobody else spoke against it.
Okay.
I'm not done. Also, when you go to this, all of us, me also, we go out every four years and we talk to the public. We ask them to vote for us because we're going to represent you, the public, the voter. Okay? That's our job. That's your job to listen, which you guys are doing. And it's disingenuous for some politicians to go out and play the tax thing, play the fiscal cliff, play all these games to attempt to scare people. I was a policeman for 39 years. I went through six different mayors. We went through 9/11. We went through COVID. We went through recession. All the fiscal cliff, the fiscal, everybody scares the voters and attempts to scare you, but you guys are brighter than that to know we're going to be fine. We're still getting all of that revenue from everything out on State Road 2, north and south, when it wasn't supposed to go north of 2. But the whole process of this, this is what things are supposed to be. And I thank everybody. Probably 30% of the people who are here left because of a long, long presentation. So with the 30 seconds I have left, again, I'd like to thank everybody on both sides. I think this is not the right thing to go out at this time. I think you guys were very smart in saying, let's put a pause on this. Let's see how this goes. Let's see if it's more productive for us to see what happens down the road with everything that's being built there. And other than that, peaceful life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dieter.
Hello, my name is Corrin Chapman. I'm at 733 West Washington Street here in South Bend. Mr. Dickinson said something near the beginning of his statements hours ago now. He said something along the lines of, and it's not a direct quote, I can't remember the exact phrasing, but South Bend was a center of industry and other people in the region, in St. Joseph County, perhaps were envious of it. And I'm glad he said that because if you know anything about our regional history, you know that's, that is disingenuous. That's not the whole story. The whole story is that industry left us behind. The big companies used us in our community for what we were worth, and then they dropped us the second it wasn't profitable for them. These big companies do not care about our community, and all these promises will vanish or be rescinded the moment it is profitable for them. So the only real question that you should be asking yourselves is, will you once again believe the false promise of industry? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Hi there, Will Miller of Township Trustee. Office is located at 110 South Arch Street, New Carlisle, also a resident of New Carlisle. Thank you for listening to us tonight. I'm asking you to vote no to this rezoning to industrial. The 2045 St. Joe County Comprehensive Plan was developed by you, the county council, the Area Plan Commission, the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, the Platte Committee, and Task Force members. This wasn't something that was just thrown together by outsiders. We, as a group, came together and negotiated how we wanted our community to grow for the next 20 years. It was approved by both the Area Plan Commission and by this board just a year ago. The section of the comp plan regarding the future land use map that everyone's talking about states that the future land use map shows the preferred long-term development pattern for the county's unincorporated areas over the next 20 years. It's one of the most frequently used tools from the planning process because it guides all goals and recommendations in the Plan SJC. While it sets the general direction for growth, it should be reviewed and updated periodically as community conditions change. This area change that you are voting on tonight has been reviewed by both the Area Plan Commission and the Land Use Planning Committee. Their recommendation is unfavorable. No. Furthermore, the Economic Development Section of the Comp Plan states that in Area 1 New Carlisle, the New Carlisle TIF district resides within the portion area as well as the IEC, which was recently expanded in 2023. This, by the way, does define that the IEC is the core development area, south of US-20 and south of State Road 2, not all of Olive Township. Okay? It goes on to say that the county should rely on the IEC area management plan to direct growth in that priority area and work closely with New Carlisle so that the town's own comprehensive plan is carried out as intended. This does not align with the town of New Carlisle 2040 Comprehensive Plan, as that area is designated for mixed residential, okay, and ag tourism, not industrial. Goes completely against it. We've heard that without this deal, income taxes will increase due to Senate Bill 1. I just want to say that the lawmakers in Indy, they have admitted that it needs work. So why are we going to take the brunt of this? Olive Township has already stepped up to help the county. The two largest economic projects in Indiana history are in Olive Township. If St. Joe County can't make it with these two major projects, who in the state can?
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
It's going to get changed.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Hi. Good evening, guys. Thank you for your time. Look at us all being up so late. We're big, right? Okay, so I'm going to do a little.
Could you give us your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jen Miller. I'm Will's wife, and I live at 309 West Rig Street in New Carlisle. So I have to be honest, these last few months have been incredibly disheartening as this vote has been pushed back again and again. And doesn't it seem a bit odd that these delays created just enough time for a firm to be hired to promote data centers? They've sent people door-to-door, not in the New Carlisle community, mind you, produced commercials, written letters, and filled this room tonight with supporters. It feels as if the bullies had stepped out onto the playground. What makes it even more disheartening is that these are the very people who are supposed to support us and build relationships between our communities. Doesn't have to be this way. The divisiveness is awful. I will say, well done to the hired firm of the marketing 101 strategy, using emotion to drive the sale. It appears fear was the emotion of choice. And fear that taxes will increase if this doesn't move forward is the mantra. Well, we may not have deep pockets or paid marketing teams, but we in New Carlisle, I can't speak for everyone, but we do have really big hearts and we love our community. And tonight, I'm asking for each of you to please use yours as you consider this vote. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I get a little shaky. Sorry. So I'm going to skip some of this because it's redundant. So I understand that this may be a difficult decision, and some of you may feel pressured to vote a certain way. But I trust that this council is made up of good people who were elected for a reason. And I believe that most people step into public service to make things better and to advocate for their community. My hope is that you will not be bullied or swayed by outside pressure or financial influence. Right now is a time when you get to decide the legacy you want to leave. Did you do the hard work, do the hard thing and fight for the people you were elected to represent? Or did you bend under pressure? The sad reality is, is that when the people are not heard, when the area plan recommendations are ignored, and when the comprehensive plan is disregarded, the division and loss of trust that follow are immeasurable. I'm thankful for all of you that listen, consider, and protect the values laid out in the very plan created by this very council. Tonight, you have an opportunity to restore trust, to honor the hard work completed, and to stand with the people of this community. Please do the hard thing, do the right thing, and vote no for the rezoning. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Good evening, council. Dan Caruso, New Carlisle. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to do something strange. I'm not going to speak very long. That'll surprise you and probably make you happy after this evening. But I'm going to read, and I'm doing that because the eyes are a little fuzzy right now because old people don't usually stay up this late. You are elected, the Plan Commission and the legislative body shall pay reasonable regard to the following criteria when considering rezonings. This is from Chapter 4 of the Local Plan, Planning and Zoning. It says the comprehensive plan. I don't know how many hundreds of us spent probably hundreds of hours putting together a comp plan for the town, a comp plan for the county. We said, the town says intensive agriculture. The county plan says rural management. Nothing in there sounds like industrial to me. But there's five items in that criteria. It says the comprehensive plan, current conditions and character of current structures and uses in each district, the most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted, the conservation of property values, property value guarantee maybe, throughout the jurisdiction, and finally, number five, the big one, responsible development and growth. I got to tell you, I don't, I don't think, I can't believe anybody in here can find anything responsible or reasonable about putting in big industrial project on prime farmland that, I just don't think that any of us would find that reasonable. And that is, to me, that is the determining factor. It's not reasonable to do what they want to do. It's prime farmland. If Mr. Saporsky doesn't want to farm it, sell it to another farmer. He's not going to get the industrial price he would have gotten per acre, but he doesn't want to farm it, sell it. I'm sorry. That's the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caruso.
Mary Countryman, 52959 Timothy Road, New Carlisle. My notes are all jumbled all around because I've scratched out is what people were saying already. First of all, there's some confusion about the landowner. Absolutely, he has his right, he has a right to sell his land. It's the rezoning that is the debate. The process, rezoning process protects all the landowners and the neighbors and nearby community. He can sell, he can sell it as ag, he can rent it as ag. It's the rezoning. Nobody is saying this poor old farmer can't retire. That's, that's just, I've seen that online, too. We can't control the weather, and so if we have drought and we have massive amounts of water coming out of the aquifer, yeah, wells are going to dry up. We can't control if it rains, we can't control how much rain we get, how much snow we get, but we can control how much water is coming out of that aquifer, and we can limit it. Under Indiana Code, Local Planning and Zoning 36-7-4-603, quote, "Section 603, in preparing and considering proposals under the 600 series, the Plan Commission and the legislative body shall pay reasonable regard to points that include the comprehensive plan, current conditions and character of the current structures and use in each district, and the most desirable use for the land in which each district is adapted. The conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction, and responsible development and growth." I don't understand how the attorney for Mr. Saporsky could miss on just these pages alone, this many pages alone, mention farmland preservation in the comp plan. I worked on that comp plan along with several hundred other people. It is mentioned way more than economic development if you actually look into the comp plan and read it. New Carlisle already has its share of industry. If St. Joe County is having or is going to have financial issues, that's not on us. We shouldn't be punished. That's irresponsible growth. Mayors outside of our community would be gaining short-term money while we were stuck with a permanent ice sore. This is irresponsible growth. The first in four and a half months of 2025 had more auto accidents on Highway 2, State Road 2, than the entire year of 2020, more than the entire year of '21, '22, '23, more than the entire year of '24. It would be irresponsible growth to add such a large amount of traffic to Highway 20 and the county roads near this project. It would be irresponsible to go against the St. Joe County Comp Plan when thousands of dollars and hours were spent. Excuse me. Hundreds of citizens were encouraged to help write this plan. It would be irresponsible to disregard it. The comp plan clearly states the importance of prime farmland. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Countryman.
Bob Humbarder, 29987 Heard Road, Olive Township. Part of our farm ground is only a quarter mile from Amazon. The house is a mile as the crow flies. Here's what it's like to live next, live nearby. Constant daytime backup bell noise. The night sky is starless over that way. Early morning, 400 cars and trucks going towards Amazon. I go to work the other way, bucking the traffic flow. Afternoon is vice versa. Before the snow, fully loaded dump trucks, semis, all day. The vibrations shake the dishes on the shelf and pixelate the TV. Road trash pickup has become a periodic chore. Strange people from distant states wander around our land. Unanticipated road closures result in extra time needed to go anywhere. The condition of the roads south of State Road 2 are deplorable. Most of these roads are not wide enough for two lanes. Traffic tends to drive right down the middle, causing loose gravel to pile up along the edges of the grass. When one comes from the other direction, both vehicles must pull to one side. I was mowing the grass beside the road when cars go in opposite direction at high speeds passed right beside me, leaving only a foot or two clearance beside the mower. Not only did it scare the hell out of me, it sprayed gravel all over me and all over the mower. Vehicles now get stuck in snowdrifts, sometimes blocking the road. Had to back up three quarters of a mile on reverse in my own tire tracks just to get back home. I finally got to work in my truck by going the other direction, miles out of my way. That's what it's like to live near a data center that you imposed upon my neighborhood. I am also bitter that none of the town or township officials did a single thing to oppose the expanding of the IEC south of St. Road 2. I would feel totally justified in speaking against their current opposition. I would feel totally justified in speaking against their current opposition to the one north of town. It would be justifiable revenge. However, I would not ask such a thing of anybody. Consequently, I won't be vindictive. I ask you to vote against bringing another one of these rural neighborhood disasters to St. Joe County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Humberger.
Zoe Regland, 1825, Riptide Drive in South Bend. First, even though I'm against this, I'd like to hear from all the tradespeople and union reps. It's great to hear about all the apprenticeships, and that's a silver lining. My cousin's a union electrician, and my other cousins are line workers, so I appreciate that. Mr. Dickinson alluded to the unique nature of the data centers a couple of times, but I haven't actually heard many of our leaders talking too much about the reasons for the data centers other than some hand-waving about the coming economy. I think it's worth discussing why we're being asked to build these and what's the intended outcome. Not all economic developments are equal. Pardon my nerves. It's because they, and I mean people like Peter Thiel and Sam Altman and these other top Fortune 500 companies, aren't just trying to achieve artificial intelligence, which will have a lot of changes on our economy, but they're trying to achieve artificial general intelligence and artificial superintelligence. They're trying to build something that has agency and is smarter and more capable, not just than the smartest humans, but than the best human civilizations. These are their publicly stated goals. Whether or not they achieve these goals is up for grabs. Nobody knows. That's the thing about AI. Nobody really knows. This is totally unprecedented. Jeffrey Hinton, who's often called a godfather of AI, has stepped away from his job at Google to warn about AI, saying in 2024 that there's a 10% to 20% chance that AI will result in human extinction in three decades. He and Yashua Bengio, another godfather of AI, speak frequently about the catastrophic risks, both from AI itself and from bad actors within it who gain access to it. I am not a catastrophist. I don't really think that human extinction is coming, but the fact that the people who know this way, way better than any of us are totally freaked out about it really should give us pause and make us consider, what are we doing when we say, yes, we'll have another data center? Yeah, they're not cranks or doomers. They devoted their whole lives to furthering the aims of AI. And should somehow we develop artificial general intelligence, common sense tells us in all historical conflicts between societies with unequal knowledge and technology, the lesser society always leads to the greater. I'm running out of time. So, I'm just gonna say, developers and politicians are using scare tactics about money, and unless we invite the data centers, that brings out the cynic in me. That's like them saying, the machine is coming, let's at least make a buck out of it. That's not a good moral argument for complicity. We might be attracting investors, and it sounds like based on the unique characteristics of St. Joe County, we may expect an increase in these requests. But that's because they see us as suckers with cornfields. You know, they don't see us as sophisticated. They don't care. It's been displayed in how their representative was talking to us, all, sometimes as if we're the slowest guys in the class. So, whether we're suckers or cynics, if we vote to do this, we're complicit in the future of AI, too, and that's something I think very long and hard about. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Nancy Shale. I'm gonna speak completely differently than anyone else has. I'm going to speak to you from my heart. My family resides-
Ma'am, ma'am, we need your address for the-
I'm getting ready. 53810 Walnut Road.
Thank you.
New Carlyle, Indiana. Have resided there with my family for the last 40 years. Additionally, my family, the Johnsons, homesteaded here more than 68 years ago and still reside at 53800 Walnut Road. Both of these addresses are adjacent to the proposed data center project. Mr. Dickinson, for full transparency here, stated that Mr. Soporsky or someone had talked to all of the surrounding neighbors. Me, my mother next door, never was contacted. We never had any conversation with anyone. I knew about this when the sign went up in the property across the road. What I want to say is, a family 68 years ago came here for the peacefulness, the quiet, the small-town quality of life for themselves and for the next four generations that have followed. The greatest thing about this is, my family is not unique to this scenario. Many families in Olive Township have multiple generations that chose to stay and raise their families here. New Carlyle is our home, our connections, our beautiful prairie lands, and our safe place. We have had to adjust to the influx of the construction traffic, the noise pollution, the strain to our local public safety personnel with the building of the AWS and the expected battery plant. There was no prior planning done to address these roadway concerns for our schoolchildren, the bus drivers, the daily routes by the citizens just trying to navigate safely to and from work and try to get home daily. None of us want more. We don't want any more of this, especially in a location that is outside the IEC or designated IEC, which I've learned tonight. I feel the citizens are no longer of vital concern that everything is only about the dollars. That's what this has felt like. I understand that with the enactment of SB 1, there will be revenue concerns, but you have to start planning now, just like the other entities, the police, the fire departments, the libraries, the school corporations. They are all affected and have to adequately plan for the shortfall, not just shove another data center down our throat. We can't be a one-trick pony show in St. Joe County. These data centers belong in areas that would be less disruptive to the locals and the residents that don't want to see their property values go down.
Thank you, Ms. Shale. Your time is up.
Thank you. Please vote no.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Sporliter. I live at 54568 Maple Lane in South Bend, Indiana. I'm a volunteer and a board member and representing here tonight the local St. Joseph County chapter of the Isaac Walton League. It's a conservation organization that's dedicated to wise stewardship and environmental preservation. Was asked to speak, to urge you to vote against changing this zoning from agricultural to industrial. Yes, we have concerns about the aquifer, the energy draw, the taxes, those are all there, but primarily, it's the loss of the open lands and the quality of life that actually does have a value. It's a monetary value. It makes the area a place that people want to live and move to. We are basically alarmed at the loss of that and the lack of appreciation of that. We wish there was more thought taken about the quality that that brings, that makes this metropolitan area desirable to live in, and we would like to see that protected. Follow the comp plan. Follow the recommendations of area plan that gave an unfavorable recommendation to it. It doesn't make sense. Look beyond next year's budget and the woes and worries about that and look long-term. We have a long history of industry in this area. You can see the industries come and go. They have a finite lifespan. This will, too, probably very soon. What you're doing now will affect things, will be important 10, 20, 50 years. My kids, their kids. Do the right thing and keep it the way it is. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sporliter.
Hello, my name is Tom Rowe, 26160 Lake Lane, South Bend, Indiana. I have my backward part of my property is on Grapevine Ditch or Creek, exiting off of Samantha Lake. More and more, when we talk about drought-like conditions, my creeks dry a lot more in recent years. Somehow, that has to do with the environment in a certain way, other than the country club pumping water out, but that's a different story. My bullet points, I don't want to be repetitive, but I start out with county and state fiscal management has created the current crisis. Senate enrolled Act One. Republicans have held the state house for 20 years. Now, the county and the city will have to pay for this at this point in time. Something could've been figured out differently, but it resulted in this. Next bullet point, Mr. Larry Garatoni, I'm probably speaking wrong. This was in the paper and quoted, that this is not a political issue, but an economic issue. If that's the question, then why did he pay for the J L K political strategies to become involved? That's a lie, okay? If you'd hear, I would, because it's right in the paper. As of 2008, 2025, South Bend Tribune article, there appears to be a certain level of sort of a disenvolvement as to the initiatives proposed by the two mayors and the three commissioners as far as there's a little bit of inconsistency and double talk. I'd love to know the truth, because I'm a good reader and I didn't find it. Mr. Garatoni said he is sorry, this was in the paper, quote, "that New Carlyle residents and their personal lifestyle could be impacted, but progress moves on." Literally, it was sent out to the people that are like combating or counteracting misinformation about local environment and resources, specifically water and utilities. My statement is trust and verify. Are you saying that the city of New Carlyle and people that oppose us are liars? I don't think so. They're here for a passion. The commissioners, the St. Joe Council members, they, I think some of them valued what the findings were, as where it went to as far as a 7-0 vote, okay? So, my question is, why are we even having this? They were the persons that worked under you, and they made that recommendation. South Bend Tribune Articles 12725, Downstate article, "You Want to Beat Data Centers? Ban Utility Lobbyists." Full article on that. Stark County, just last, within the past week, okay?
I'm sorry, Tom, your time is up.
Past week, put a moratorium for one year on data centers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Still can't time it.
You're getting closer.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kim Burnett. I live at 129 East Bend Street in New Carlyle. Except for my college years, this town has been my home for my entire life. Over 60 years ago, my parents moved here for work, but they stayed because New Carlyle was the perfect place to raise a family. The same promise brought me back after college, and it's what continues to inspire my daughter, her husband, and their growing family to invest their lives in this community we all cherish. Small-town charm, great neighbors, a rural farming community. This isn't just where we live, it's who we are. Tonight, I speak as a lifelong resident and steward of our community values. I strongly oppose the proposed rezoning of agricultural land for a data center. This development would fundamentally change the character of New Carlyle and impose long-term consequences that far outweigh any short-term economic gains. The proposed site sits dangerously close to our town limits, encroaching on homes and community spaces. Our rural appeal will be replaced by massive windowless industrial buildings with downward lighting. With them comes traffic we cannot handle and do not want, along with noise, light pollution, and creeping industrialization of what has always been a peaceful rural environment. New Carlyle's strength lies in its agricultural heritage and small-town character, values that define who we are. Rezoning farmland for industrial use doesn't just change land, it erodes the very identity that makes our community special. Once this door opens, it sets a precedent for unchecked development, turning New Carlyle into another tech corridor disconnected from its roots. My children, our children, and grandchildren deserve more than concrete and traffic. They deserve a place where they can freely run, ride bikes down quiet roads, and gaze at a sky full of stars. We chose New Carlyle because it offered a lifestyle built on safety, simplicity, and connection. The residents have spoken clearly. They overwhelmingly reject this rezoning request. The town itself stands firmly behind, against it, and both the County Area Plan Commission and the Land Use Planning Committee have forwarded this proposal to you with unfavorable recommendations. To vote now in favor would undermine the very purpose of this structure and disregard the voices it was designed to represent. New Carlyle is more than land on a map. It's a way of life worth protecting. I urge you to prioritize long-term well-being of our community over short-term corporate interests. Please help us to preserve our land, the lifestyle, and the legacy of New Carlyle for today and for generations to come. Please vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett.
Yes, sir.
Harry Gilbreth, 1245 Bissel. Hey, guys. I want to say, you know, a few years ago, when this first came across everyone's desks, I get that this seemed like a great idea. This seemed like this awesome, amazing new technology that we had so much to gain from by bringing it into our community. But things have changed. Luckily, we were not one of the first communities to start putting these up like crazy. I mean, we got the Amazon one going in, and we're seeing how that's going. We have an opportunity to see the hard-learned lessons that these other communities have been taught. We get to see that the water dries up, that power rates go way up, that cancer rates go up, something that was interestingly left out of the defense of this, that car accidents around the facility go way up. What we're doing is, for short-term gain, we're taking on enormous long-term risks. We're gambling with our future, with our children's futures, so that we can get something that, you know, it might all be magical coincidences that the water dried up and power rates went up when Amazon came in, but we are seeing this pattern repeated across the country. I don't know if magical coincidences that can be perfectly explained are happening in every community where these are going in, but I think if these were as good as they're telling us they are, we would be seeing story after story about how amazing these are. They'd be screaming it from the rooftops. Instead, we're seeing stories about how much damage they do to communities. If these were as good as they're telling us they are, they'd be building this in their own backyards. There's a reason they're coming here to build this, guys. It's because they think we're stupid. They think that no one cares about us, they think that we're desperate, and they think they're gonna get away with it. Well, guess what? I know for a fact we're not stupid. I know that we care about us. I know that everyone sitting up there cares a lot about us, or you wouldn't be up there. And I know that we're not desperate. I know that we are tough, smart people who can make the hard choices that we need to make to build a future that can last. Nothing that was built in a day was, or sorry, nothing that was built to last was built overnight. There are no shortcuts to prosperity, and we want a strong foundation, not a house built on sand. And, you know, we talked a lot about facts, we talked a lot about coincidences. I think one of the biggest facts that should be in everyone's mind when they're voting on this tonight is the fact that, I've been to a lot of these meetings, I know that you guys have been to a lot more of these meetings. Has anyone ever seen our community so worked up in a bipartisan fashion across the aisle about anything?
Mr. Gilbreth, your time is up. Thank you.
Have a good one. Thanks, guys.
Marcy Kaufman, New Carlyle Town Council President, 124 East Michigan Street. On October 21st of this year, the New Carlyle Town Council adopted a resolution opposing Bill 4225. In the text of the resolution, the town outlines its concern that the location of the proposed development is fundamentally incompatible with the long-term vision for the area as expressed by both the town and county comprehensive plans and would undermine the orderly and sustainable growth of our community. New Carlyle is currently bordered on the west by LaPorte County line and on the south and east by a combination of housing, agriculture, and the IEC. The most reasonable direction for the town to have measured, thoughtful growth is to the north. An industrial zoning designation here would severely impact the town's ability to expand residentially and commercially. New Carlyle has partnered with the county to accommodate all the IEC developments. This continues to be an ongoing and fluid situation of huge proportions. From locating services to traffic enforcement to water infrastructure, the town continues to work diligently to accommodate the needs of the IEC, the real IEC, the core development area, not the new one we're hearing about. Our fire and EMS services have been taxed by the increase in accidents. The town continues to experience an increased volume of both construction and employee traffic that barrels through our town daily, causing pedestrian hazards and increased vibrations, eventually affecting town infrastructure and buildings. If the proposed rezoning is approved, the subsequent data center construction will be in tandem with the State Road Two interchange construction. This will route traffic through New Carlyle, creating an ab- This will route traffic through New Carlyle, creating an absolute dangerous traffic nightmare. There are so many considerations to look at with Bill 4225. From water to fire and EMS accommodations, to the preservation of prime farmland and an historic byway, to adhering to the intent of both the county and town comprehensive plans. The town of New Carlyle needs and deserves the time to fully integrate and absorb the impacts of completed Amazon and GM projects and other subsequent suppliers and businesses infilling the IEC without having to accommodate an unplanned, inappropriately placed second data center. Put it in the planned and designated industrial center called the IEC. The rezoning of this property in this location to the most intense zoning designation in the county with no other adjacent industrial properties, relevant existing plans, or pre-existing utilities outside of electric, outside of the electric transmission lines at this specific point in time, adjacent to a town of 2,000, that it continues to juggle the impacts. I think you get the idea.
I think so too. Thank you.
Please deny it.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman.
Thank you.
Hello, Will Short. I also sit on the town council in New Carlyle, 124 East Michigan. I don't think that I could do a better job of presenting what all has gone into, the effect of the town board's involvement, not just with the board members themselves, but with members of the community, business members of the community, residents of the community. What do we want for our 2040 plan? And that 2040 was a number because, you know, we push out that far, but this goes way beyond that. My children, I live in, I live in New Carlyle with my wife and my children. My children are fifth generation, living on the west side of the county in that area, on one side of my family, and they are fourth generation from the other side. My parents, my uncles, my grandparents, all went to school out there back before it was New Prairie, when it was just New Carlyle School. So there's a rich history and heritage, and I feel very blessed to be someone who comes after those who fought to make sure that the town and the community that I live in was preserved in a way that reflects in such a beautiful way to my family that it's still such a desirable place to live. The hours that were spent in this meeting tonight pale in comparison to the thousands of hours that have, that were spent working on the zoning and working on the plan for that. And to go just into a little bit of that, to make an exception to something that was agreed upon by everyone, that was, that was already approved by everyone, that's been talked to tonight, everyone who already gave an unfavorable recommendation, to make an exemption, to say, yes, you know what, we'll allow one to go just south of State Road 2. It's just one, like it's not, it's just there, but nowhere else. And now that project's not even completed, and we're asking for another exemption to be made to go outside of the IEC, again, the real IEC, to another area that was never designated for that purpose. Went to Madam President's point, that project's not even complete yet. We don't know the effect of that. We don't know that, not saying that it's going to be bad, not saying it's all going to be bad, but we don't know. And I find that it's very irresponsible to bring on a larger project than that in terms of investment when that one's not even done yet. So I would ask that the board would, that the council here would deny that, that they would vote no against that. And I think that if you go and you look at all the points that were made where they were saying, well, we're going to abide by this, we're going to abide by that, half of those were by law and regulations, like it's not like it was anything, you know, extraordinary. And I find it laughable that we get to choose which plants are going to be out there when it's all said and done, that that was supposed to be some kind of selling point. So thank you for your time. Please vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
Hello, I'm Brian Will, and I'm co-leader of the Citizens Climate Lobby chapter for South Bend and Elkhart. My address is 52484 Hickory Road, Granger. Citizens Climate Lobby is nonpartisan, and our goal is to create political will to address climate change and protect the environment. And Mr. Rutten, tonight you asked a question that I didn't think you got a response. You asked about the environmental impact of the data center and electricity use, and the answer you got was more about the responsibility of the power companies to generate power to meet customer needs. Data centers are significant contributors to local air pollution because of their dependence on fossil fuel power plants here in Indiana, specifically coal and natural gas. And they've already announced plans to build another natural gas power plant to support these data centers. Data centers are hungry for electricity and thirst for our water and our serious threats to our household economic well-being because our electric rates are going to continue to climb, not just because of data centers, but also because of investment in infrastructure needed to support these transmission lines, not retire coal power plants, as he claimed. For as big of an environmental footprint they have, even large data centers create only about 100 to 120 jobs once construction is completed. And in our case, because of a shortage of skilled trade workers, many of the contractors who helped with the construction of the building of these facilities will come from out of state. They don't stay here and pay taxes once the job is done. These days, too often, we voters see that some of our elected representatives are not responding to the voices of the many and instead are being subservient to a few, specifically special interests, corporations, and populist political movements. Last week, there was an article in the South Bend Tribune where a couple of our elected mayors came out in support of this project, yet admitted later that they haven't done the research to understand the real issues associated with data centers nor their impact on the communities like New Carlyle. I have done my research, and I know that now is not the right time to approve yet another data center. Technology is evolving, and in the next few years, the next generation of data centers won't need as much electricity or water or space. I ask you to vote no on this energy-guzzling, noise-producing, heat-generating data center and send a loud and clear message to New York City, Silicon Valley, and Washington, DC, and to the Indiana State House that the people of St. Joseph County will not ignore our comprehensive plan and its goals for improving quality of life. I ask that you affirm the voices of the area planning commission, the land use committee, and the New Carlyle Town Council and the majority of residents here in St. Joe County and vote no on this bill because the costs are much greater than the benefits that they're promising. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will.
My name is Dana Groves, 118 West Chestnut Street, New Carlyle. I'm the history lady of the town, so I had to share this quote that I've had for a while, and it's an excerpt from the South Bend-St. Joseph Valley Register newspaper from 1875, 150 years ago. Quote, "We find nestled on the summit of a gentle rise and surrounded by one of the garden spots of earth, a beautiful town known to our readers as New Carlyle. The locality takes an early position in the history of the county and has long been noted for the wealth and prosperity of its citizens and the fertility and beauty of the surrounding country." I'm a lifer, long life, lifelong resident of New Carlyle. My family were early settlers of the community. The people back then and still today recognize and appreciate the beauty and fertility of the land in and around New Carlyle and have been working hard to protect and maintain our small-town and rural way of life. People live here and visit for its hometown feel, historic charm, locally-owned businesses, safety, and our wonderful school system, not for data centers and industrialization. I'm one of the many that served on the comprehensive plan committee for the town. We worked tirelessly on that, and I believe that to rezon this farmland for another data center is very short-sighted and not responsible growth. The proposed area located along historic Chicago Trail was once a Native American footpath from Chicago to Detroit. The Village of Hamilton was built there and had a stagecoach stop. The old one-room schoolhouse and the oldest church north of the Wabash River still stand, and the cemetery is the resting place to early settlers and veterans from the Revolutionary War and every war since. Hamilton Communities is a rural respite and home to our senior population, many of whom continue to drive. This proposal will have a negative impact on their quality of life, and the attic traffic will make it even more difficult for them to navigate. I can't think of a worse place for this rezoning. We've just recently seen all the money being spent on TV ads, people going door-to-door to garner support in every community but New Carlyle. We are being thrown under the bus by the mayors of South Bend and Mishawaka and others who don't represent us. According to one county commissioner, New Carlyle should, quote, "take one for the team," but we've already taken enough. You put the IEC in our backyard, we deal with the negative impacts daily, and we don't even fully know what all the repercussions of the data center currently being built will be regarding our water and electricity. We, the people of New Carlyle, deserve representation. I'm all for the unions, I'm all for jobs, I'm all for growth, but smart growth, and this is not smart growth. So I'm asking you, our leaders, to represent us, the people, and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Groves.
My name is Rhonda Suter. I live at 54651 Winter Green Road, New Carlyle. The 252 acres is right across the road from me, that we just don't really know what's going to happen with, you know? They promised that it might go back to the town. We are county, 3 acres, everything surrounding us is town, so that 250 acres is actually across the street from about probably a half-mile of city limits, just to put that in perspective. We were there first, before it got zonetown. Couple things I want to talk about. First of all, it's not feed corn that is being grown, it is called seed corn. Seed corn, which my boys and my husband have helped de-tassel for years and years through their growing-up stages. These farms are very important where young boys and girls, they become young men and women after doing a summer of de-tasseling. I don't know if any of you guys have ever done it. Fortunately, I didn't have to, I got to babysit. I'm sure there's many people out here that have de-tasselled. I spoke with Jerry Kallanese several months ago about how many people he thinks he's employed with de-tasseling, and he and Deb had to think about it, and they got back with me. Over the years of de-tasseling, they have probably employed at least 10,000 different students and college students, some coming back year after year, starting in 7th grade all the way through college for their summer job. This is, this is teaching people real-life skills, and also, I might want to go to college because I don't want to work in the field the rest of my life. Another thing people don't realize is Chicago Trail is an Indiana bike route. How many of you guys have actually driven on Chicago Trail? But if you drive Chicago Trail on a summer day, you will see multiple bikers. There's a group from Chicago that bike to the Notre Dame first home football game, and there's about 100 bikers on that. What's going to happen to them? I have a mother-in-law who lives at Hamilton Grove. She's an independent living, as well as probably another 100 people. She doesn't drive anymore, but there's a whole lot to do. It's a little bit scary pulling in and out of Hamilton Grove, even for me. I have to really stop and do a double look because cars come flying around those curves. That's a two-lane road. 20 is a two-lane road. There was a bus accident today on Tulip and 20th, the New Carlyle bus, and I'm only assuming it was construction traffic because it happened, got, bus got rear-ended right at about the time that the construction traffic all comes down Tulip Road. I will pass over 100 cars coming towards me on my way to work and on my way home.
Thank you, Ms. Suter.
Good evening. My name is Andre Gingerich Stoner. I live at 628 Cushing Street. I was a pastor, and now I work with leaders from We Make Indiana, a network of congregations, faith communities, and people of conscience to work and partner with public officials to make this a community where everyone can thrive. And I just want to take a moment to look at this crowd. Here it is, after midnight. This is a beautiful scene. I mean, all of you, like, this is a group of people who care. They care, we care about our communities, we care about each other. And I want to thank you for creating a meeting space where we can listen, we can speak, and we can listen to each other. That's something beautiful and precious. I'd like to just name a thing or two that's been touched on. We're talking about the biggest corporations on the planet that want to come make money in our backyard. And the scale is beyond my comprehension. Amazon, if I understand it correctly, when that's finished, they're going to be using the amount of electricity of a million homes. I can't even wrap my minds around what the implications are for that. And these companies are run by the most, the richest people on the planet. What's a billion dollars? What's $200 billion? That's who's running these companies. And, you know, they have gophers and minions, some of whom who talk for hours and hours. They have accomplices, and they pay decent wages, and I'm glad for that. For them, it's crumbs. They don't care about you, and they don't care about any of us.
Andre.
And they don't care about our community.
Towards us, please. Address the council.
They don't, they don't care about our community, these billionaires. You know, these are people and companies that are used to getting their way. They are used to breaking the rules. They don't care about fines, they mean nothing to them, they pay off the politicians, they pay off the I U R C. These are people and companies used to getting their ways. I don't trust Jeff Bezos. I don't trust Mark Zuckerberg, and I don't trust people who do their dirty work. But I trust you. I trust you to do the right thing. I trust you not to sell our birthright for a bowl of potage. I trust you to vote no for the rezoning.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I am Thomas Peterzak, and I live at 501 South Brace Street in New Carlyle. I have traveled the road between South Bend and New Carlyle for my entire adult life and some before that. On an average drive, you might see five or 10 oncoming cars, 20 if traffic was heavy. One night on my drive home from work out by the airport, I started counting, and I realized I couldn't count them and drive safely, so I bought a clicker and clicked off on all the oncoming traffic. The very next day, I drove that section of road at 5:30 PM. By the time I got from the airport to downtown New Carlyle, I recorded 374 cars. It's just unbelievable, bumper-to-bumper traffic going the other way. And we're talking about a residential development going in along Highway 20. Now we're talking about adding this to the traffic, because how else are they going to get to the worksite? Can somebody explain a route that doesn't involve using Highway 20? I can't think of one unless it's Chicago Trail right past the Retirement Village. So I am adamantly against this. We aren't ready from a road infrastructure standpoint at all. We're not even close. And this is going to continue until Amazon's done building and until GM's done building. And it's only going to get worse if we add more to the mix. And as an actual computer scientist, I found something humorous tonight. The AI data centers are going to be used to figure out ways to have lower staff levels in AI data centers. Think about that. The numbers they throw out to you, they're already actively working to lower them using the technology that we're going to bring in here. And if you don't believe me, there are plenty of system engineers out there that can explain this to you better than me because I'm a software guy. So thank you very much for listening, and please, please, remember it's the people that count. It's not the money coming in from the outside, it's nothing else. If we sell ourselves out to this, we're selling out the future generations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peterzak.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Tucker, 127 South 34th Street, South Bend. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and thanks very much for your time. Wanted to respond to a couple of things that Mr. Dickinson said, just a couple kind of higher-level thoughts. He said in his October testimony, you might remember, he said, "we ought to know the deal that we're bargaining for." And I saw in his presentation something about the 12 commitments that commitments that the company's willing to make. Not one of them was a commitment to any particular water use standard, or energy use cap, or energy efficiency and renewable source standards, or battery backups instead of diesel generators, or infrastructure payments, or cost share, nothing about numbers of jobs created, lifespan of those jobs, equitable tax abatements, et cetera. There were no commitments to any of that. And as Andre said so eloquently, they don't really care about us, they care about their dollars. I appreciate all the efforts that you all have taken to understand the issue. Mr. Tanner, you especially, you represent my district, I appreciate all your work to share the, your learnings with us. And yet, I still feel like too many questions are unanswered, and unanswered straightforwardly by, by the folks that represent this project. So this is our opportunity to hold the developers' feet to the fire, to demand clear answers and adherence to the highest standards. I don't see that in any of their commitments. So they can't meet our standards, they ought not be able to get our support. In response to Mr. Dickinson's comments on the comprehensive plan, he suggested that people are only paying attention to one page of that, which is the planning map. But I don't think he gives enough credit to the scores of us that participated in the planning process to develop that, that plan. We're informed and engaged citizens, and we have legitimate concerns. And it's not just an economic development plan, it's a comprehensive plan. It's got eight pillars, you all know them, environmental stewardship, farmland preservation, quality of life in place, utilities, transportation. You know, on one hand, this is a pretty complicated issue. On the other hand, it's pretty simple, and a straightforward, simple reading of this resolution would violate the spirit of essentially the entire comprehensive plan. So when you vote, I hope you'll weigh all of those elements of the proposal equally, and if you do, I think you'll find that it falls short of the standards that we need for, that our county is aspiring to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
John Hamilton, 913 West Colfax Avenue in South Bend. Fifty years ago this night, 1975, at the age of 35, I had been practicing law in Los Angeles for seven years. I tell you this for scale. Fifty years is substantially shorter than the average American's lifespan. What has 50 years to do with the current data center frenzy here in St. Joseph County? The answer, electricity. A I, the primary reason for the explosion of data centers, as well as crypto, the cloud, and TikTok, is not possible without a flood of electricity never seen on earth before this generation. Electricity cannot exist without energy to produce it. Among possible sources of energy, solar and wind are minor players when it comes to operating the some 5,000 data centers we already have. The president having rejected the fact of global warming, the federal government intends for at least the next three years to suppress solar and wind power, as well as high-density advanced batteries. Natural gas is now and will be the primary source of energy to power data centers worldwide. This is where the period of 50 years becomes relevant. According to Google's A I, the world has only 50 years left before we run out of natural gas. When asked whether the drive to build data centers will have any effect on what remains of natural gas, Google's A I answered as follows. "The global construction of data centers will likely accelerate the depletion of natural gas reserves, potentially shortening the 50-year extraction prediction." This is due to the enormous and rapidly increasing energy demands of A I and data centers for which natural gas is a primary and immediate power source. As the world's nations grab the last cubic feet of natural gas to be found, economic and no doubt political, pressures and disputes will intensify in ways we cannot imagine. At that point, at most a couple of decades hereafter, we and the world will face the ultimate question, who gets the last natural gas, and for how much treasure and blood? These data centers are little more than self-indulgent toys of morbidly wealthy tech bros, oligarchs who have not a scintilla of interest or concern for the rest of us. They are throwing their wealth at a short-term final blowout of power on the hope that nuclear fusion will save them in substantially less than 50 years. Fusion, however, as an actual source of energy, does not yet exist. In order for nuclear power to replace natural gas, would require better than 400 entirely new nuclear plants. And finally, a reminder, Three Island, Three Mile Islands meltdown happened a mere 46 years ago in 1979.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Tim Cotton, 63808 State Road, 23 North Liberty, Chair for the St. Joseph Libertarian Party, and I'm the District Two Chair for the State Sensational Committee for Libertarian Party of Indiana. Little bit of a preface here, you know, I'm pro-data center, I'm pro-nuclear power, I'm pro-energy of, you know, just about any source that you can get. I grew up farming, I did my military service, and yet I'm still against this project. The eyes of Indiana are on this room tonight, and the question that they are asking is simple. Does St. Joe County belong to the people that live here, or does it belong to the lobbyists in Indianapolis? We all know what's happening. We know that the political pressure you are under. We know that the state House and state party leaders have pressured you, and they've told you to shut up, get in line, and approve this deal, and many others like it, or face the consequences. Well, I'm here to tell you, if you vote yes tonight out of this fear, you are not leaders. You are being accomplices. Let's call this what it really is. This isn't economic development. This is economic strip mining. You're being asked to rezone massive acreage against the explicit advice of your own planning commission. You're being asked to hand over millions of gallons of water on a, whether it's closed-loop or open-loop system, there, there's no guarantee which process they're going to use. You're being asked to spike the utility rates. Okay, granted, it's not going to be a direct, but there will be a indirect result of every grandmother and small business owner in the county. And you're doing this in the name of billion-dollar tech corporations. What do we get in exchange? Crumbs. To the Democrats of St. Joe County, this is corporate welfare in its ugliest form. This is a massive wealth transfer from working-class families to tech company shareholders, subsidized by our own natural resources. To the Republicans here on the council, this is big government tyranny. This is state-crushing home rule and forcing a bad deal down our throats with legal threats. They tell you, "We need this money." They wave the S C A I budget crisis in your face, in our faces. This is a lie. It is a manufactured crisis designed to panic you into selling us out. I look around this building tonight, we had a lot of people here, and I see the residents who are scared for their wells and scared for their bills.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton.
Vote no.
Thomas Miles, 32300 Edison Road. If you know what address that is, I'm a half a mile down the street from the Amazon plant. But I'm not going to talk about the Amazon plant, you already heard all about that. I'm going to talk about my business. My business is Old School Tile Company. I am about a mile and a half down the street from the new plant. And that plant would significantly help my business because of the traffic pattern going right by it. But this isn't about money. What this is about is those 300 grandparents that are down the street at that nursing home, that if you guys approve this, those 300 grandparents, one of them comes out to go to the grocery store or the, the church, and, and she gets nailed by a cement truck, or a box truck, or one of the union workers. It's not going to be their fault. It's going to be your guys' fault. This is serious business. That, that nursing home's been there for 100 years. And I don't care about my business or the money. It's about saving those people. It's, it's them sitting on their porch and looking out and seeing deer in the field across the street and not see a big plant because they say they're going to make these plants pretty. I'm just down the street from Amazon. It's not pretty. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Miles.
Good evening. A J Popovich, 62 West 9th Street, Mishawaka. There's been a lot of talk tonight about our, our revenue as a county. It's, it's in a, it's in a rough spot right now. And we have been promised financial liberation with this deal. We need this deal, surely. It's an injection of funds, it's, it's jobs for all of these guys and gals, and I just can't see it lasting. I don't think that a data center is long-term financially viable. Just in September, MIT did a study and found that 95% of A I companies are not profitable. 95%. And we're going to have three different companies possibly in this county. That's a risk that I don't think we should be taking. On top of that, they're promising jobs, they're promising, you know, we'll have 14 data centers on-site, and each one of those will require a specific number of workers. These companies are developing these A Is to reduce the workforce. The less workers there are, the less these companies have to pay, and the higher their profit margins. It was said, this is one of the eighth most wealthy companies on the tickers. And they're just going to take. That's all they do. They just take. And I, I don't think we have that much left to give. So that's, that's all I've got. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Skylar Bueno. I live at 1539 Troyer Trail. According to the 2020 census, as it was recorded, there were 62,546 children who lived in St. Joseph County. At 16, I was one of them, and I grew up among the bones of what my mother called home. I watched my home change in ways that I did not understand. I watched parks turn into luxury apartments, I watched forests recede, and I watched my best friend's home flattened for a construction project that was never finished. I love my home, but I am watching it be destroyed, and I am watching dismay be brought, be brought upon the people that I love. Our land is being privatized, and our resources are being poisoned. If we sell out what left, what we have left, what will our children grow to love? I urge you to vote no against this rezoning. Thank you.
Mr. Bueno, what, your address, what city is that?
Mishawaka.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, thank you guys for sticking around. My name is Shep Levick. I live in New Carlyle. I've been there since 1996, almost 30 years. I'll keep this brief. If this project is, is anything like the Amazon Data Center, then Timothy Road, Chicago Trail, and Walnut Lane will become just like Edison Road, which is blocked much of the time for construction vehicles to get in and out. As Tommy Miles just told us, he lives on, he lives there, he can, he can justify that. Well, here it is. The New Carlyle Fire Territory Services Hamilton Communities, which is on Chicago Trail, and it's home to hundreds of seniors in independent living, assisted living, and nursing home, and also all the employees that work there. The vehicles from the Fire Territory must use Timothy Road, which goes north up to Chicago Trail. That's how they get there. That's the only way to get there. It's approximately two miles outside town and goes along the proposed property line for this data center. And if you can imagine, if you went down Edison Road even today, you'll see that it would be blocked. There will be service disruptions. A vote to rezone this property for the construction of a data center will be a vote to block fire and E M T vehicles from servicing the Hamilton Communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levick.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Betts. I live at 730 Cottage Grove Avenue. Thank you for still being here. I am personally opposed to this data center, but I'm actually here as Conservation Chair of the South Bend Elkhart Bird Alliance, and our board, which consists of about 12 members, and then our local membership, which is 750 people. I've sent you our letter, and it's not that I want to be repetitive. I know that you all have listened so much and so carefully, but I can't help but think about the people who can't still be here at 1:00 AM, all of the parents with small children, people who are elderly, people who need to be at work at 6:00 or 7:00 AM. And I've watched a lot of people walk out this evening because they just, they just couldn't. So if it's okay, I'll read on behalf of all the people who can't be here, and we'll see how much I get done. You all know that the rezoning is inconsistent with the multi-year, multi-stakeholder county comprehensive land use plan, as well as the map. The recommendation within that plan is to preserve highly productive agricultural areas, especially ones recognized by the USDA as prime farmland. Prime farmland is defined as prime because of its soil quality, and our soil quality is here because of the legacy of the Grand Kankakee Marsh. This land that we're talking about rezoning would fit that definition. We all know that Amazon has already built seven data centers and desires to construct an additional 30 on the land of the Kankakee watershed. I think we need to think in terms of watersheds about this, not just towns, and that the town of New Carlyle, they're already dealing with a staggering demand for water and electricity. There was a New York Times article that you may have seen on June 24th, "At Amazon's Biggest Data Center, Everything is Super-sized for A I." As someone else has already mentioned, the Amazon data center in our county will consume 2.2 gigawatts of electricity. That is enough to power a million homes. The Indiana Citizens Action Coalition has also estimated that the Amazon data center, combined with the neighboring G E battery manufacturing facility, could withdraw 24 million gallons of water a day, a day, from the Aquifer. That does not include the sewer system, nor the de-watering of land for construction. At the time of this writing, our organization could not find any public information about what kind of electricity and water usage this new data campus would use. We truly do not know the effects that this kind of electricity usage and water consumption that they'll have on the human and biodiverse communities of our area. For this reason, we ask you to vote no against the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betts.
Good evening. My name is Katie Maschary. I live at 815 Ashland Avenue in South Bend. But I'm from rural North Texas and grew up on county farmland. Over the last decade, I've watched irresponsible development motivated by profit tear apart farmland, reshape communities against their will, irreversibly changing their rural culture, and also draining their resources, not to mention the truly miserable traffic. I speak for the interests of communities all over the country who find themselves at a crossroads, or who have already regretfully taken the wrong path. I ask you to consider, again, council members, why do we zone? Why at all? For profit, or for the common good? For short-term monetary revenue, or for the holistic good of our communities? This room is one of the last places in the country that is not beholden to relent, to the relentless search for profit that governs Big Tech and so much of our everyday lives against our will. Profit maximization is not the law of the land here. The invocation tonight began with an address to the Creator God, and I imagine most people in this room and in this county believe that to be true in some way, regardless of their specific religious affiliation. And I think we can all agree that we have a responsibility to till and keep the earth that's been given to us, and to sustain it for generations to come. If so, we ought to consider how every drop of water and acre of farmland can best serve our communities now and in the long term. This is not about simply avoiding disaster, it's about making the best use of what we've been given. The preservation of farmland is both a national security and an economic sustainability issue. Even the 700 unpaved acres of this development will be uncultivatable, and if that's a word, and thus unable to feed and fuel us, our livestock, and our children. and if that's a word, and thus unable to feed and fuel us our livestock and our children. In fifty years, will the world's most fertile farmland, the US Midwest, be a desert of data centers or continue to be the breadbasket of a hungry world? The man who presented in favor of this resolution eased your concerns about a number of aesthetic and ecological implications of this development. However, I ask you to look beyond treating them your symptoms of problematic development, but the cause, irresponsible land use. The question isn't about how we build a data center. It's whether we do it at all. It's a rezoning question, and the answer should be no. I ask that you consider your particular responsibility as public representatives, not board members of a profit-seeking corporation, to vote as stewards of the natural resources and vitality of the communities that you serve, to protect the people you serve from the tyranny of big data and profit more generally. With an interest in sustaining these communities now and for generations to come, I urge you to vote no to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. I'll say good morning. Everyone. One o'clock after one in the morning. We're finally here, the decision point. Steve Francis, Judy Lake Drive, Clay Township. Dan was gonna remind me of that. I wanna say, I really feel heartened by this. And the fact that you're sitting there, you're all awake, barely. The audience, and pro and con, it's just been an amazing night, really. And I commend everyone who spoke tonight. We've heard a lot about the comp plan, and I won't quote that again. I want to turn our attention to the IEC management plan. That's the specific plan for that site out there, and it hasn't been mentioned tonight. I'll just quote from the guiding principles, because I think it's illustrative of what was intended to happen in the IEC. This is the vision statement, number five, livable and healthy community. The IEC will consist, will coexist in harmony with the town of New Carlisle and all of Township. That's under question tonight. New Carlisle's small-town charm and agricultural character will be preserved and celebrated. Community events, placemaking, and other investments will foster community cohesion and strengthen assets that make New Carlisle a desirable place to live, work, and play. This is number six, coordination and collaboration. Ongoing efforts to develop the IEC will occur, not may, but will occur in a way that is coordinated and aligned with local and regional priorities and initiatives. For example, the New Carlisle Master Plan. Community stakeholders will have a voice in ongoing implementation efforts where possible. Where possible. The county will pursue effective public-private partnerships to ensure that project risks and rewards are shared equitably. Now, I mean, this is a plan, right? Words matter, though. Vision matters. And then the execution of that plan really matters. And I think that you heard tonight from people not just out in New Carlisle, but all over Saint Joe County. We worked hard to represent that because we didn't want you to think this was just the people of New Carlisle who are against it. It's we are joined together as a community to find a way forward, to have economic development that serves us all, that has not placed an unshared burden upon one group of people in one area of the county. And I think you're charged with making that decision tonight, and I hope that decision is no. When I was co-chair of the Blue Green Alliance, I worked mightily with Jim Robinson of the USW, the United Steelworkers. I was the green guy, okay, with Sierra Club, state chair. I can't finish, but I do want to say, I pledge to work with my union or labor brothers and sisters that we need to find a way. This is not jobs versus environment or quality of life.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Hunter Stevens. I live at ten ten Longdale Avenue in South Bend. I've lived here my whole life since I was born in Saint Joe Hospital. I had stuff to say about water and power, but I'm gonna skip that because there's been a lot of talk about the costs. And I wanted to talk about the benefits, or whatever benefits there are. Because AI hasn't figured out how to scale up yet. Someone mentioned the ninety-five percent not profitable number. And I was gonna mention that, but AI can make funny pictures. It can do a fancy Google search with questionable results. It can make fake videos that make each of us be able to trust the internet even a little bit less than we already could. And sure, there are specific uses. Machine learning has been around for decades, and this is a next step in that. But there are no problems it can solve on a large scale. We won't see much in the way of tax benefits because we're giving this company tax abatements to draw them in. And what's left over, we've already discussed that Indianapolis won't let us tax anyway. Even the employees that are left are gonna be kept at the bare minimum. Because while there will be a lot of people, a lot of union members employed to build these centers, after that, the employees will be kept as low as they can. Data centers have one of the lowest jobs per square foot ratio of any facility out there. The speaker said earlier, I think, he said a hundred and fifty employees in the first half and the same in the second, which is three hundred for this entire facility. As far as I can tell, there is only one benefit to AI on all these data centers. And it is the one thing that those pushing AI at the very top are trying to solve, which is having to pay the rest of us wages. Because if you can replace a hundred jobs with one person managing an AI server, you can make your profits go up just a little bit more next quarter. For those union members here, I wanted to say, or if you see any union members, tell them, I work at AM General and I love how strong our union is. I am adamantly pro-union, but these companies don't care about unions. They want to squeeze us for every penny we have. And our unions have value in their strength, and I wish you would not give it to them. So I urge you, council members, please don't approve this project or this rezoning. Let our county do what we can to stand up for people, not the mindless companies and oligarchs at the top. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Hi, thank you, everyone, again, for the long lividity of this evening. And my name's Kay West Hughes, two one six West Madison Street in South Bend. I wanted to talk, well, I just want to say, I'm very impressed with all of the expertise that's been shared by the individuals who have stayed this late to talk with you and their personal experience. And I hope that you weigh that as importantly as the first two and a half hours that we had in this room. But I wanted to talk about something that hasn't been talked about too much, and that's public health and pollution that is related to these data centers. You know, the closed-loop system, I'm sure that you've done research on that closed-loop system. It's not actually using water over and over again. That water has to be released and replaced because it gets microbes in it, it gets metals in it, and it clogs up the, you know, it doesn't cool anymore, so it has to be released. It's very hot when it's released. It's usually sprayed with something cool, so there's a lot of evaporation. But that is gonna be poured, you know, into our ditches, right? Into our water system. And it really worried me when, and maybe I got this wrong, but the way I understood it was the response to what would happen if there was some type of spill or if there was some type of problem, it's the city's water system's problem at that point. And I think that's something, that made me sit up and say, whoa, you know, that's no plan. There's no plan for that. And it's very important because, as someone said earlier, that farmland is on very poor soil. I've brought this up before when I talked, but it's what's called an unconfined aquifer, which means there's no, you know, heavy clay cap or rock cap. So that means if there is some kind of spill, it can go right into the aquifer. And yes, the aquifer could disappear, but it could also be polluted. And that aquifer, again, is the watershed that goes to, you know, the Kankakee River, the Illinois River, and the Mississippi River. We don't want to contribute to that. We need to have a plan for that. And as far as I can tell, there is no plan. I mean, I wanted to share one article that I'm really concerned about that I read. It's published November twenty-first. California data, and it's published by University of California Riverside. California data center health impacts tripled in four years. So the impact of the data centers in California impacted the health of citizens. And let's see. Impacts, health impacts from pollution associated with California's computer processing data centers tripled from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three and could rise by another seventy-two percent by twenty twenty-eight unless mitigation policies aren't acted. It's the diesel generators part of that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. West.
Good evening, President Citro, and the esteemed county council members. I'd like to say good evening, or good morning again, to my own councilwoman, Councilwoman Shabazz. I'm Oliver Davis. I live at eighteen oh one Nass Street, South Bend, Indiana. Thirty-three years ago, when I first moved to this area, I lived at thirty-one seven forty-five US Twenty in New Carlisle with Don Hales and Barbara Hales. So New Carlisle was my first home when I first moved here. You know, I listened to the speaker earlier tonight. He talks about non-disclosure agreements. And no, we don't have non-disclosure agreements that I'm aware of. However, when I saw my mayor, Mayor Mueller, come on and signed an agreement, I was concerned because of the fact that no plans were publicly discussed to our city council. And I am a city council member at large, as you well know. This is my fourteenth year serving on the South Bend City Council, where I've been the past president in the town. I've been vice president. Currently, I'm with our city plan. I am with our finance committee. I am chair of our zoning. Nothing was brought to our committees. And so to see our mayor sign this agreement without consulting with us and consulting with a lobbyist concerned me. Because the lobbyist is not electing us. The people are electing us. And I had great concerns when I represented the entire city of South Bend. And when I think about that, it bothered me when one of the speakers said that pop-ups may come up. And we have a pop-up. The farmers called me, several of them in my area called me on Sunday and showed me another pop-up. This is the ethanol plant that I have, our councilwoman's, right around the ethanol plant. There is three hundred and one acres of a data center coming. Ten data centers are coming right by the ethanol plant. And it's coming within a one year. And has our mayor discussed this with us? Absolutely not. I am tired of these kind of things being hidden and people calling me and saying people are not sharing these information. I, as a zoning person, should know. I mean, look at this. It's all around where I live. It's all around. The ethanol plant is zoned. And so here we are. We're having all of these data centers come on the west side of South Bend, and I'm concerned. You know, back in two thousand eight, when we were talking about things, hotel and motel tax and others, when we had the circuit breaker, we came together as a South Bend Common Council. We came together to do things. And for us not to come together now is really concerning. That's why we need to work together. Thank you and good night and good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Hello, my name is Karen Kazmerzak. I live at two three three six four Lawrence, South Bend, Indiana. I prepared a speech. I will try to abridge it as best as I can. Tonight, you will be voting on a proposal to rezone over a thousand acres of farmland near New Carlisle so that a data center can be constructed. There are many reasons why our county council must oppose this rezoning. To begin with, I would like to express my extreme dismay at the fact that the name of the actual corporation behind the data center has not been released to the public. This has been the modus operandi for the Amazon and the battery plants now under construction. The public has a right to know upfront who is vying for our land and tax abatements and not be kept in the dark until matters advance almost beyond the effectiveness of citizen input. This must stop. Environmental concerns also are of importance, and they cannot be assuaged by promises. We heard from the gentleman from Indianapolis about various agreements or promises that the company is going to make to mitigate the effects of the new data center. But these were only came to the forefront after a rejection by the New Carlisle Town Council and by the zoning board, that kind of thing. Why didn't they come up with these things beforehand? Why weren't they concerned about the landscape and the noise and et cetera? I wonder if their interest really is in our community. If it was, they would have had this for us from the get-go. There is also a concern about the groundwater. He had mentioned that, you know, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management says it was the loss of water in the New Carlisle area because of the Amazon plant. It's not for that reason. It's because of the drought. If that is so, then I wonder why, where I live, my well did not run dry. Where my brother lives, north of town in Clay Township, his well did not run dry. And where my other brother lives, south, in the south area in the county, his well didn't dry. If we had a drought and it affected wells, it would have affected wells across the county and not just in the New Carlisle area adjacent to the Amazon plant. So I do question that logic. I want to go to the very last paragraph that I came up with because this is something that nobody talked about or have only touched upon. AI as a project is projected to replace many clerical jobs that are traditionally staffed by women. How many enjoy phoning a business only to have an AI voice greet them with a menu of ten items? I personally prefer to speak with a person, with an actual human being. It can only be guessed at this point what effects AI will actually have on the workforce. Not all are equipped to work in high tech. What will they do when lower-skilled jobs are not available?
Thank you, Ms. Kazmerzak.
Okay, you're welcome. And please vote no.
Good morning. My name is Cynthia Martin. I live at twelve twenty-nine South Twenty-Fifth Street, Mr. Catanzerite's area. And what brought me here was I and some of my friends received a text. We didn't ask for the text. I don't know how they got our phone numbers. And it was, it turned out to be a text sent from Massachusetts, paid to recruit us to sign a petition in favor of this project. I'm very concerned about that, very upset because someone from outside of this area, far away, is doing this. And it wasn't long ago that there weren't people who signed petitions for this project. All of a sudden, it's happened. So it's obvious where the thousand signatures came from. And it wasn't promoted by people who care about us. So after I received that, I looked up a few things about other centers and other areas of our country to see the good and the bad. And the loop water system, I found, isn't faultless. It can leak twenty-five percent per month. It needs sophisticated monitoring. There are environmental issues. There's competition for the water still. It's high impact with little oversight, usually. As far as electricity, generally, it goes up quite a bit. Atlanta, Georgia, has put a pause in their approval of data centers because of the problem. Their electric bills have gone up six times, been approved to go up six times since twenty twenty-three. So of course, permission has to be asked to raise the cost. But still, it was approved and needed. In Indiana, our state utility forecasting group from Purdue University predicts that with the data centers, ours will double. As far as jobs go, my grandson's going to be an electrician, so I'm very happy with that trade. But it seems like generally it's two years that those trades are active in the centers. And because of the high energy as well, the high energy requirement, one of you mentioned more compatible with the community.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I'm sorry your time is up.
Other businesses can't have electricity then. So thank you. I hope you vote no.
Hi, I'm Joan Fetters from Granger, Indiana. I have never done this, so this means something to me. Thank you for staying up so late. I just have a couple of things because everyone else has already said what needs to be said. What hit me the hardest when someone was talking and they talked about the quality of life and the quality... And the quality of life, and then the next statement was high tension wires. That isn't the quality of life for the majority of people that live here. We don't want to see tension wires or be under them, and we know they're not good for us. So, I was thinking that the people that live here want to be away from Gary-like cities and Chicago-like crowds. So, we want to keep this area pleasant. And if, if we didn't learn anything from the COVID pandemic, we, one thing that we did learn was that we need to have farms. We need to have self-sustaining abilities. We need fresh water. We need farms. We need food. And we need it close by. And it can't be run by Bill Gates and let him buy all of it and do what he wants with the food. We want food that doesn't have hormones and pesticides and all those things. So, those are the things that concern me. And the key word is rezoning. When somebody zones something, it's supposed to be like that. It's like somebody that comes into your subdivision and knows what the rules are and avoids all the rules and decides they're going to do what they want to do. If you don't want to follow the rules, then don't go to that zone. Keep the zones the way they are and keep them like they should be. And then the last thing I want to ask all of you, because I always learned as a child to put yourself in someone else's place. And I ask that all of you think about your homes. Think about where you live. And think about what it would be like if someone came and said, "We're rezoning, and we're going to put this next to you, in front of you, behind you, and this is what you're going to live with, and you're going to love it because your taxes will go down." So, just think about those things. That's all I ask. And thank you for being here. And please vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Fetters.
Hi, Esther Kather, three thousand two, South Shore Drive, Mishawaka. Sorry, I'm fading. I normally get up at four AM for work. I didn't write anything down. I just want to say all the points have been made, all the stories shared. And, you know, there are questions and concerns on both sides. I know you all have questions and concerns. So, I would urge you to vote no, as I'm saying I'd like to vote no as well to this.
Thank you.
Good morning, council. I'm Mark Chabot, nine twenty-two, East Oakside Street, South Bend. I don't think I could make much of a better point than the speaker who discussed the history of industrial impact on South Bend and the other who mentioned the specific dangers of artificial intelligence. I want to add some other context to help understand what we are currently facing as a nation and what we will be complicit with if we go along with adding another data center to the county. We are currently facing something called a K-shaped economy where stocks continue to rise while employment falls, allowing for the owners to get richer at the expense of the working class. This correlated precisely with the creation of ChatGPT. The country is currently in a dangerous and over-leveraged position with our top eight companies being responsible for forty percent of economic growth this year. What happens when this bubble bursts? On Monday, President Trump posted to Truth Social saying he wants to sign an executive order making the regulation of AI essentially illegal. How is that potential order going to impact the rulings of the IURC? Lastly, September of this year, Bloomberg reported a community in Virginia saw a two hundred fifty-seven percent increase in their utility costs over the past five years largely due to AI and data centers. We must consider the bigger impact of adding a faceless corporation to our community with such a massive footprint. I implore this council to vote no and focus on your constituents that will actually build a strong town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chabot.
Chris Cobb, two fifteen East Polk Hagan Street, South Bend.
Chris, I'm sorry. What was your last name?
Cobb, C-O-B-B, as in boy.
Thank you.
And that's five seconds I'm taking for having to repeat that.
That's fine. You can do that.
So, it's really, I, I do appreciate your being here and I appreciate everyone who's turned out. None of us, nor none of you, asked to be put into a dystopian hellscape where we have to be having conversations like this about the future of our land and about whether we're going to try to balance our books for another year by selling out to the billionaire tech bros. But that's basically the choice that we're facing. And what I heard many of you raising around the economic, the budgetary challenges that we face because the, the energy lobbyists got our representatives in Indianapolis to make some very short-sighted choices. None of us wants that. But I have to urge you to say that you are the Marx. You are the ones who are being pushed into a position to feel like you're desperate for a solution. Or if you are complicit to pretend to us that you are concerned about those things while you go forward and do the bidding of the billionaire tech bros. That's the situation we're in. I would like to trust you. It's hard to do that because I've been at the one AM meeting before. I've been in the meetings where members of the community have urged to distrust the TIF as being the solution, the economic solution to all of our problems. That we have, we're going to have this economic liberation. That was promised when the IEC was approved. That was promised when Amazon was approved. We have these big projects going, and here we are back again looking to approve another big project because this is the one that's finally going to solve our problems. And then we're going to, prosperity is going to arrive. And it's not. We've seen it not. That football has been pulled back again and again. I say this to, many of you on the council were not on the council when those, some of those early votes were taken. Some of you remember that. I urge you, remember that the football has been pulled back. I mean, I want to contest one little factoid that the lawyer from Indianapolis put forward as an illustration of the way in which they're trying to get you to think short-term. He was talking about, oh, it's just a tiny, tiny, tiny percentage of all this farmland St. Joseph County has. Since nineteen twenty, St. Joseph County has lost one hundred thousand acres of farmland. We still are blessed with a hundred and forty thousand more. But we're almost halfway through that endowment. We have to manage it carefully. And politically, if you're feeling pressured, remember, everybody hates AI. Everybody hates AI. To stand up to AI is a huge political winner.
Mr. Cobb, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Reed Tarpley. I live at thirteen forty-four Ford Street in South Bend, Indiana. A lot of people behind me are going to give long-winded speeches. I don't feel like they need to do that. I just want to remind you guys about Mr. Dickinson when he went up to talk about, you know, he was asked a question about what was added to the, like, to the water for cooling. And he said nothing, and he paused, and he kind of chuckled, and he said a coolant would be added. Those closed systems, as we've, like, discussed before, like, they're not totally closed. They will enter our water system. He discussed this. You know, often that's something like very toxic usually makes water not freeze. It is not healthy for humans, and it will be poisoning our groundwater. So, please vote no to not poison our groundwater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tarpley.
Paul Carnes. I reside at one one four nine two Lauren Drive in Osceola. I'd like to thank Andy. He responded to my Facebook post I made last week and posted the, the information for people to come out and be able to speak their minds tonight. I really appreciate it. I'd also like to thank all of the union workers. I, I really, really appreciate men who work with their hands. And I would also like to give thanks that all you showed up tonight because unlike the Mishawaka mayor, the South Bend mayor, the previous South Bend mayor, every single time there's been a hot button political issue in this county, they have all disappeared, and unlike them, you are all here. The two points I would like to make real quick is the fact that from twenty sixteen to July of twenty twenty-five, if you look at the Indiana Regulatory Commission, if you look at their yearly report for this year, in twen, from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-five, NIPSCO residential customers are paying ninety-one point seven percent more for electrical power. And Indiana Michigan power users are paying forty-seven point three percent more. The reason that is a problem, and it relates to what we're discussing tonight, is in twenty seventeen, the Regulatory Commission approved a rate increase, a tiny rate increase, that has skyrocketed to almost doubling rates for NIPSCO customers. It's completely unacceptable. And also, the landscaping that is proposed to be put around this new data center, I mow, I have mowed over the last two years every single Dollar General in St. Joe County and out in New Prairie. They do not, they are not forced by the code department to keep up with their landscaping. It looks like garbage. It is not maintained. I am not paid to maintain it beyond mowing it. And it is going to look like trash in the future. It is going to be an eyesore to the community. So, I would appreciate it if you would vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carnes.
Jennifer Reinell, five one eight six zero, Cheryl Drive, Granger. There are a few new faces, but I've come to this council before and it didn't listen. We ask you not to rezone agricultural land, and we were ignored even though rezoning went against the county's plan. And here I am again. I don't appreciate the empty threat that a vote against this project is a vote for future tax increases. The state of Indiana has capped our taxes. The county has tried to get around this before and failed. The accurate assessment of my home is three times what it was ten years ago. Your question, I felt, was pertinent. Learn to balance your budget, just like your constituents have to do when we lose income and when we are hit with inflation. This paper says the temporary jobs will create one point four million in taxes as they bring in workers. But the next paragraph insists they will give local contractors priority hiring. They're either hiring locally or they're putting people up in hotels, not both. This county has a cap of fifty-five percent of the safe yield of the aquifer, which creates two important points. This will be the third data center. If all three have that same cap, that makes a hundred and sixty-five percent. More importantly, open water systems will not go back into the soil to replenish the aquifer or even be recycled because they're used for cooling, and so they'll evaporate. And it's basic physics that closed systems will directly warm the environment around them, even when they're not being drained. The DNR apparently hasn't released the data to the news or public on their supposed report. This data center will only use one gigawatt of power, which is equivalent to about ten times the number of homes in St. Joseph County. We citizens lose our eyesight to LED light bulbs because incandescents were banned on grounds they use too much energy. But AI data centers require AEP to upgrade its infrastructure, and the data center itself will run generators at fifty-five percent. Not when the power is out, but constantly, shooting nitrous oxide into the air. There's been a forty percent increase in nitrous oxide emissions since nineteen eighty, which has been blamed on agriculture despite the worldwide decline in farm numbers. Conversely, the number of nitrous oxide-producing data centers have greatly increased since the nineteen nineties. The data center is one computer or even a part of one. It isn't storing family pictures or county records or even MMO data. A data center stores the data for the AI. It stores data that the AI will then plagiarize in response to someone's request that it writes a book or a master's thesis for them. AI writes court arguments with fake case citations that illegally win cases. AI tells people who are depressed to kill themselves and encourages people who are looking to reduce salt in their diet to replace it with poison. We can't hold a computer responsible, but too frequently, the corporations behind them also escape punishment. The poorly-named Western Hospitality Partners is a shell company for another shell company. Not only does this business have no accountability for its actions, but we citizens can't find out who and what's backing it, and that's unacceptable.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Gable. I live at eighty eighty-nine East Walnut Ridge in New Carlyle. I'm a licensed social worker for the Youth Wellness Court in La Porte County. I work with families and children. I do not hate AI. I'm an Nvidia fan. I know where the rest of the world is right now, and I know if we don't keep up, they're going to bypass us, and that could be bad. But there are some concerns that do have to be addressed. One of the national security recommendations is that these centers be placed thirty to fifty miles apart at a minimum, and that is for national security. The other thing is that the law does recognize accumulative impacts of multiple facilities in close proximity. Approving a second center without the cumulative impact assessment would violate basic due diligence standards and create legal exposure. And it is impossible to create that assessment at this time because we do not even have one completed data center to do an assessment on. My main point is child safety and family safety. There is no direct route to the main, from the main road to that facility where it's located. The only route is the route that goes right past the new exit that was put in place for our middle school and our high school due to the dangers and the fatalities that our students suffered exiting out onto Route Two. They redid that whole area, rerouted all the traffic so it could only come out on twenty for the safety of our students. We live in a town where this was done because of fatalities. We put in a dog bone because there were fatalities. It is a tragedy when you live in town and you hear even a student from another school coming to a basketball game dies trying to leave our school event. That's the reality of what happens on those roads. We no longer have a safe exit out onto Route Two. If this happens, and there is absolutely no alternative back route from Chicago Trail to get to two or twenty, they will have to go through town, which means they're going to have to drive past our only elementary school where it's the main entrance and exit to that, where our children cross the roads to get home, where our kids still ride their bicycles in the streets, where we had to reroute all of our middle school and high school traffic, including our buses, to safely get our kids to exit off the road our schools on. And that will be the only road you'll be able to route traffic on. So, until we have an alternative for that, we already have documented history of fatalities, and you will be taking the risk.
Thank you, Ms. Gable.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sid Schroyer. I live at fourteen oh six Chester Street in South Bend. I've lived in South Bend for more than forty-eight years in what is today the County Council District of Mark Katanzerite and the County Commission District of Raphael Morton. I have no personal financial stake in that decision you make here this evening. I have not been compensated monetarily or with benefits for being here this evening. I am a retired teacher from the New Prairie District, which includes New Carlyle. I have many friends in New Carlyle and a greater relationship with the community than most people who live in St. Joseph County. I rise in opposition to this rezoning proposal. The project that requires this rezoning threatens the community of New Carlyle. The elected executive representative of the people of New Carlyle opposes it. You need to respect that. You are being urged to represent financially motivated people, most of whom do not live in New Carlyle, and to align yourself and the rest of St. Joseph County against the wonderful citizens of New Carlyle with the uncertain promises of wealth, jobs, and lower taxes. Nearly everyone who supports this adjustment in zoning serves to benefit financially from it. Those who oppose it do so as a gesture of community responsibility. You should not acquiesce to an organized public relations campaign by a for-profit billion-dollar enterprise that is attempting to show that its concern is for the people of this community when, in fact, it is not. For the Democrats, they have enlisted. It means hoping that we can forget about a professed concern for communities that have historically been excluded from access and representation due to systemic power imbalances. That's the status of New Carlyle in this fight. For the Republicans, they have enlisted. It means hoping that we can forget about our professed concern for family values. For New Carlyle, preserving family values is what this fight is all about. In spite of the fact that this proposed development for New Carlyle lies outside the area the county itself established for industrial growth, in spite of the fact that the Area Plan Commission and the St. Joseph County Council Land Use Planning Committee have rejected this rezoning petition, in spite of opposition from the New Carlyle Town Council president, this representative body is poised to circumvent the will of the people with the argument that the people most directly affected by this project need to take one for the team. A team that exhibits behavior that holds them in contempt for the sake of someone else's profit. of someone else's profit and for empty promises. By the way, there's no drought.
Thank you, Mr. Schroyer.
I rise in opposition to this proposal for rezoning.
Good morning, council members. Steve Sass, 27910 U.S. Highway 20. I'm running on fumes. I started preparing something, but so many people have expressed such eloquent concerns over this rezoning that honestly, there isn't a lot more to be said other than to add some anecdotal stories about myself. I moved here to New Carlyle 31 years ago. I started two businesses. I raised a family here. I love New Carlyle. This is why, the rural charm of New Carlyle is why I moved here and why I've stayed here and why my kids are here. And I would really like to not have to leave my home, but I'm actually sort of faced with this decision right now. The other day, I was on my way out the driveway to turn left to go down to the grocery store to get dinner and I was sitting in my driveway for 15 minutes because I couldn't get out of my driveway on Highway 20 because of whatever traffic was being let out at that time. This new project will be horrific for U.S. 20 because that's going to be the main thoroughfare coming from, coming off of the bypass or the toll road or perhaps Chicago Trail, which is even worse. You know, I think it's wonderful to see so many people here at almost 2 o'clock in the morning. I can't thank all of the folks here in this chamber enough, including all of you on the council. I know a lot of you have been under immense pressure to get this deal done, including some horrific personal attacks, which nobody deserves. And I think that for every one person that's here at the meeting tonight, there's probably 100 people who agree with us. But one thing I hear a lot is, well, I'm not going to bother with this because it's already predetermined. The money is going to win out. These people have all been bought off. It's all a predetermined deal. And, you know, that's heartbreaking to our democratic process. And when I look at this and I think, well, now here we have an opportunity. Clearly, the will of the people is to not rezone this property. As our elected leaders, I, you know, I ask that you follow and honor the will of the constituents in saying no to this rezoning and leave New Carlyle to have some semblance of a rural atmosphere, which is why so many of us love the area and live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sass.
Hello, Lorraine Williams, 904 Homewood Avenue, Mishawaka. I am a software engineer. I have probably utilized the technologies about which, you know, these data centers are built more than maybe anyone in this room combined. I use them every day for my work. And in that process, I have been extremely disenchanted by them. I think that many of the people championing these technologies, including the petitioners here today, as sustainable and future-proof are desperately trying to outrun their own irrelevance and the depletion of our planet's finite resources. I prepared a lot more, but it is almost 2:00 AM. So, but there were a couple of things that came up that I just wanted to address a little bit. And one is this idea of these new jobs, right? And this idea of that we're going to fill these jobs with local labor. But the jobs, the skill, the skills needed for those jobs in these data centers do not exist here, at least not right now. And I have not seen any commitments, commitments that I personally, you know, are those commitments actually like a requirement, right? Is there, is there any real way to like make them hold to those commitments or are these things that they say that they will do, right? Because I think that these big tech companies come in to communities all over the country and all over the world and they say they're going to do all these things and then they do not do them the way that they said they would. But as far as these skills that are needed, I have not really seen any commitment to actually, like, yes, I have seen commitments to put money into these schools for those skills, but not toward the people who would actually be going to those schools because it is incredibly expensive to get the education necessary to do some of these jobs as systems engineers, computer engineers, and some of these various technician jobs. And another thing that I had seen brought up is this idea of like that, well, this build-out is only a couple of years. The Amazon build-out is for the next decade. They're going to be building for 10 to 15 years. One, that means we will have a pretty steady supply of union jobs in that time just from the AWS project. And two, that means that I don't think this is a problem as far as people have talked about traffic that goes away after a couple of years. This is a decade we're talking about. Also, the quantum computing thing, quantum computing has been around for 30 years and hasn't really gotten off the ground.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
My name is Emily Goldman, 523 Lincoln Way, South Bend. I am a senior mechanical design engineer with experience in thermo-fluid component design, and I am very concerned about the proposed WHP data center project. My concerns are motivated by the discrepancies within the peerless water study and the IEC's approved water draw, as well as the emphasis by WHP's proponents on a so-called closed-loop cooling system as an acceptable mitigation plan regarding water draw concerns. William, Bill, Shalile, and the IEC are lying by omission when they say that 24 million gallons per day is a sustainable draw because our aquifer has a 44 million gallon per day safe yield capacity. Because the peerless water study itself states that our aquifer consists in additional remaining 20 million gallon per day draw during drought conditions. And yet, the IEC has been allocated a 24 million gallon per day draw with no consideration given to the existing drought conditions as confirmed by a recent DNR study. Citizen Action Coalition reports that there are more than 20 data centers proposed between Chicago and South Bend, each drawing millions of gallons per day from the Kinkiki aquifer, massive as it is. With this knowledge, it is unthinkable that we should even consider additional data center projects in our county. Earlier today, WHP also lied by omission today when questioned on closed-loop cooling technology by not disclosing that this type of system relies on both an open-loop evaporation cooling circuit, usually a large cooling tower, to cool the heat exchanger, which in turn pulls heat out of the closed-loop circuit. This means that typically 60% of the water drawn from the aquifer is actually lost via evaporation. And they also lied when they say that chemicals aren't necessary because as we know, as mechanical engineers, Andy Rutten, water is not the best cooling media, and so we add to the water additives to make it more effective. There's been no mention of how these chemicals might be handled and disposed of with no decommissioning plan. We know from recent scientific reports on data centers on the West Coast that the cancer rates have massively increased in communities which have built data centers in recent years. To quote my fellow chemical engineering colleague the other day, "These closed-loop cooling systems are the equivalent to building a chemical production plant in your backyard." And so I urge the county council to unanimously vote no on the data center project.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman.
Hi, Catty Woodhouse of 7, or sorry, geez, my own address, 50785 Mohawk Drive, Granger, barely standing before you. So now that you've heard some reliable data with sources from engineers and software engineers, you know, I'm just going to tell you, I'm going to be kind of your ghost of Christmas future about what it's like to live as a person who's been impacted by environmental pollution. So as a lifelong St. Joseph County resident, my family has been grievously impacted by environmental pollution. My mother, adopted sister, and I all suffer from the same condition called Chiari malformation. Chiari malformation is a condition where the skull does not develop enough room at the back of the head to accommodate the cerebellum or the part of the brain that controls important things like movement, sight, breathing, et cetera. This condition develops during childhood and causes debilitating headaches, vision loss, and hearing loss. It is life-changing and can only be fixed by surgery. Because the type of Chiari malformation my family has is not present at birth, environmental factors play a huge role in its development. My mother grew up to one of our landfills where toxins leach into the earth. As a child, her only option was to drink, cook in, and bathe with water that smells like sulfur and tastes like rotten garbage. My sister's birth mother lived a block away from a methamphetamine operation that exploded and left the land scorched with toxins. I grew up thinking I was safe from these harms in a middle-class household, but environmental toxicity does not care how much money you make or who you are. In a county where we still have children drinking from tainted lead pipes, some of the highest radon levels in our basements, and a river that is so contaminated that eating more than three fish from it per year is ill-advised by our health, well, I'm not sure health, but it's definitely ill-advised by doctors. On top of that, our lovely Riverwalk in Mishawaka is built on the bones of defunct factories, which no doubt still affect the health of our residents today. That is all to say, we have work to do to rehabilitate this already damaged environment. The Mishawaka Riverwalk is a good example of this, but we have to remember our history. My grandpa dumped chemicals from Bendix into places in this county and they have not been recovered. So I ask you, what do you want to do with the future? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodhouse.
Good morning, council. I'm Audrey Grace of South Bend, Indiana. Growing up, I had several farmer friends around Osceola, the boonies of Mishawaka, all over northern Indiana. They showed us how to run the farm, cultivate the land, feed the livestock, which generated a newfound appreciation for agricultural upkeep. Community-supported agriculture is responsible for distribution of our produce from the South Bend Farmer's Market to beloved grocers like Purple Porch. It is essential to our local food economy. However, with the implementation of data centers, the environmental impact would be irreversibly disastrous. Our utility prices would surge to accommodate only the big tech enterprise, the water supply, and the quality will be significantly reduced. And these are only a couple of countless examples as to why the opposition to these centers persists. The community has come together to conduct research and present the truth behind these data centers. The depletion of natural resources will be the fault of our state and the local leadership who vote in favor of them. Consequently, many residents will relocate and seek better representation for their personal and residential sustainability. The council would also be duping workers into believing that these jobs offered through these data centers are stable when in fact they are contractually temporary and will have massive layoffs long before construction is complete. So to put it plainly, the general public may only have a passing familiarity with these data centers for now, but it's enough to realize that many area residents will soon be priced out of their homes and they will realize that the quality of life will sharply decrease as our resources are taken from us. To supplement an illusion of economic gains over environmental sourcing and ethical sustainability practices are things that I myself, as a lifelong Michiana resident, will not stand for. And I can tell you that I know for a fact, we all know that Hoosiers can make better use of our lands. So I'm asking the council to vote no on the rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grace.
Good morning, councilors. My name is Richard Hall, 1301 Fairfax Drive, South Bend. I am here today, standing before you, barely, to ask you to oppose rezoning this land for the data center. I appeal to you based on the following points. The center's use of massive amounts of water and energy, as many have highlighted tonight. These data centers have been shown to use similar amounts of energy comparable to large cities. This water belongs to the residents of the area and we should be the ones who decide if and how much of it we give to these faceless corporations. The centers are not transparent about how they will restore groundwater and energy. We do not know what harmful chemicals they will add to treat the water used. They make a lot of claims but provide no evidence aside from a hearsay of supposed closed-loop water systems. Next, the claim has been made repeatedly that data centers will bring wealth to the community. These jobs will only be plentiful during the construction phase. Afterwards, these facilities require very few employees while guzzling large, guzzling local water and electricity, blasting noise from mechanical systems, belching exhaust and filling the night with stark floodlights. AI will actually slash jobs across the entire country, across all sectors, as corporations will use it to squeeze more work out of fewer workers. When tax time comes, it seems highly unlikely that these billion-dollar corporations will actually pay their fair share of local and state taxes. We also need to ask ourselves, what are we actually bringing about with AI data centers? What will we receive when the data centers are switched on? News stories come out every day about AI language models promoting false and misleading information, exploding antisocial behaviors, and inducing extreme psychosis and alienation that has led to recorded suicidal ideations and death. Intellectual property is being stolen and plagiarized constantly to train these large language models. All of this is in the name of supposed convenience and inevitability, but actually, it supercharges corporate profiteering and the invasion of our privacy. This does not have to be inevitable. In the Book of Genesis, the story is told of Esau being so hungry that one day he sells his birthright to his brother Jacob in exchange for a bowl of soup. I am asking the council to vote no on the rezoning of this land. We do not want you to sell our birthright for a bowl of soup.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Hello, good morning. My name is Nikisha Elena Alexis. I am coming to you all the way from the neighboring Elkhart, Indiana. I have not heard that city mentioned yet, but I'm coming because in Elkhart, we have a lot of water and I imagine that these questions are going to come up over there in the not-too-distant future. And also because I spend a lot of time in South Bend, I've been traveling to Michigan City, I have become familiar with the traffic that people are talking about. I just want to make a couple of points. I had them in an order, but my brain is not working completely. It's easy to sign, want to sign a petition. It's not so easy to bring your bodies here and be in the building and put up with hours and hours of filibustering to make a point that something is not, something is not wanted in a community. So I'm glad that 1,093 people clicked a button or sent a DocuSign, but we are here and I hope that you all will take that seriously. Of the voices that have spoken in favor of this, I want to just say that I have observed, I didn't hear a single real estate agent, I didn't hear a single entrepreneur, I didn't hear a single local businessperson, I didn't hear a nurse, I didn't hear a scientist. This man answered a lot of questions, but he's not a scientist. And most of us in the room aren't either. One report from the DNR that he cites about a drought is not science. And so, you know, of the people that you do hear opposing it, you have a variety of people, old, young, working in lots of different industries, entrepreneurs, local people, seniors, and they're of one accord that this is a no. And that's not to put down the voices on the side, the people who are involved in unions and involved in labor. Do understand, though, that most of the yeses were one industry represented and most of the noes are... of the nos are a plethora of people within the community. I want to say it's very difficult to listen to people talk about misinformation when, really, I've heard a lot of stuff that aren't even really promises, like, "We'll get money, but if an economic development agreement is signed, it'll be closed loop, maybe. We're thinking about it. We might negotiate this or that." That's not misinformation, but they're not facts either. They're statements of things that somebody wants to do. And I'll just say in closing, with the SB bill sort of as the guillotine around all this, I'll just give a quick example. A bully might threaten you, and then his friend might come and offer you money, but you're being duped in that occasion. So please say no.
Thank you, Ms. Alexis.
Hello, my name is Haley Nice, and I live in Mishawaka. My husband and I moved to the area for work and to pursue our education nearly five years ago. I hope to one day expand my family in this county, but it's off-putting to say the least, seeing this county become nothing but big tech data centers, used car lots, and car washes. I'm a lifelong Hoosier and proud to call the state my home. This county council and county government as a whole makes it very hard to justify staying. When you are trying to attract talent, I know it is families like mine that you want. I'm an electrical engineer, and I have worked in the energy industry in this state. And in my experience, I have learned that we do not have the capacity for all the—all these complexes across AEP's territory, let alone the grids, without ramping up fossil fuel generation. At the end of the day, AEP is focused on profit. Based on the amount of data center projects across the state—over 20 projects drawing from the Kankakee alone—we will not have enough water or electricity to service every project. We know that state law dictates that these projects only pay 80% of the infrastructure costs, and many in our county cannot afford a sudden increase in utility bills. We know that you cannot trust big tech. Just look at Leport and how Project Maze lied to union, I O E Local 150, by bringing in scabs. Now I O E 150 is facing a $2 million lawsuit. Recent reporting from Futurism—sorry, I'm nervous—has brought to light the fact that areas with running data center complexes and farm runoff, i.e. New Carlyle, have seen a rise in miscarriages and rare cancers. Last year, I lost my son to an extremely rare heart defect, and I don't wish that fate on anyone. Increases in miscarriages are a death sentence in Indiana where abortion is illegal. Allowing more projects will be directly harming families and infants. How can I stay here when you approve projects that threaten me directly? The closed-loop systems will eventually leak. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. I do not trust soulless corporations to keep up with maintenance. Their equipment is full of oil and other substances and can leak into our land and cause long-term harm. The centers are also not good for the economy. We know they're a bubble. Nvidia and Meta are pulling an Enron by inflating their value and hiding their colossal debt. What do we do when we are left with hundreds of big empty shells? Why do you repeatedly listen to Bill Shalial over environmentalists, engineers, and other educated constituents? Ten years in the IEC, and all Bill can show for is a battery plant in limbo and three energy-guzzling job killers. I'm tired of the backroom deals and poor leadership from multiple levels of government in the state. S E A I should not be the reason you screw over your neighbors. Be a leader. Go down to the State Assembly and tell them they messed up. Tax the rich in this county if you need to make up for it so badly. What we need at this moment is to take a page from the four counties that are including the moratorium.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Chris Kozelicki. I live at 2022 Scottswood Circle. Councilman Shpaz, I'm one of your constituents. I am an attorney here locally, and I'm actually a public defender—proud public defender who works for the county. I'm supposed to be in court in five hours here, so I should probably wrap real quick. I had a whole thing written, but instead, I'm going to offer some professional critique of my alerted friend here who presented on behalf of the petitioners. I wanted to call attention to some tricks that I know because I used them in court. There's a lot of "we" language, you notice, when he's talking about things that we need to do as a community, things that we need to develop. But I forgot who asked. I think it was Councilman Thomas, potentially. Asked about water and what happens when things go down those drains. Where do they go? Well, goes the South Bend Water Treatment Plant. Well, but we're going to be long gone by then, so that'd be a problem for the South Bend Water Plant to treat. Notice how it's "we, we, we, we," until there's a problem. Because what we're being sold here is a monorail. For those of you that are Simpsons fans—I'm a millennial, so that's my frame of reference. The monorail was sold to the people of Springfield, and then the salesman skipped town. Before this meeting started—he was sitting right behind me—I heard him offering espresso martinis, and then off to Cincinnati, because that's what this is for them. They are not a part of this community. They are not partners in this community. They are coming in, they are trying to make a buck, and then they're leaving onto the next target. Beyond all of that, I had an opportunity to take a look at their petition list. I didn't have to get more than two pages in when, all of a sudden, you see Plainfield, Illinois, Nappany, Indiana, Glover Town, Indiana, Hannah, Indiana, Crown Point, Indiana, Sherwood, Illinois, Bill Murray, a resident of New Carlyle, apparently, with no address, if you can believe that. I didn't know you guys had celebrity living out there. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, if you can't trust him to not cut corners—to not —to trust this company to not cut corners when everything is on the line for them, how can you trust them to not cut corners when our livelihoods and our well-being is at stake? One thing I say about my clients, when everything is on the line, how they act is how I know how they're going to live their life. How can you look your constituents in the eye when he handed you a document that had signatures of spurious origin from out of town and then claimed that these were his supporters? That was his big finish that he offered you. He said, "Oh, yeah, there are all these people here. There's all these people on Facebook, but here, look, I've got 1,000 supporters." Does he? Can you say that right now? Can you look me and your constituents in the eye and say, "You believe this man, and this petition is legitimate"? Or are you going to believe all the people who stayed here until 2:00 AM? Please vote no.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Hey, Chris, just for the clarification, I'm your councilman.
Oh.
And I live right behind you.
Oh, hey.
And I'm on the public defender board, too. Thanks for what you do.
Amy Sanders, Granger, Indiana. There's very few points that have not been said tonight. And a couple of things that I just really want to point out is that in the spiel that he gave for two and a half hours, there was a lot of words like "I don't think," or "typically," or "can be," or "usually." There's room for magnitudes more. We really don't know, and neither does he. And I think that alone is a reason to vote this down for a no on the rezone. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that I absolutely think that this property owner has the right to sell his land. He can sell it as act. He hasn't even tried. Another thing, let's see. He said himself that these data centers will be obsolete in 10 to 15 years, so that doesn't even put us through that 2040 plan. So another reason we should just kind of ignore another one. We also have two in the works already in our county. Let's see what's going to happen with those before we go ahead and approve a third one. If this land is super desirable, if our county is so great and in such a perfect location for these, there's going to be someone else that's going to come to the table and want to build another one at some point. We can say no now and not lose future investment. It's okay to say no without knowing everything that we need to know. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
My name is Peter Lotzenheiser. I live at 4620 Acacia Place in Councilman Thomas's district. I am a lifelong resident of St. Joe County and a co-chair of the Northern Indiana Democratic Socialists of America. I am urging you to vote no on rezoning land for the construction of an AI data center. Little bit about me, my dad was an electrician until his body gave out from the strain of decades of the job that he loved. I am currently a cook by trade. I came late to this meeting because I was finishing my shift and closing my kitchen. I am also an Eagle Scout, and through the scouting program as a kid, I learned the importance of protecting and caring for the natural world we live in. We only have one. I say this to be clear, that I take issues of labor and environmentalism extremely seriously. They are core to who I am. They are not hypothetical issues. All wealth in this world comes from two sources—the things we get from the environment and the natural world, and the human labor that transforms them into something new. AI data centers are an existential threat to both nature and labor. For this reason, we are obligated to oppose them. The water and power requirements—as everyone else has already elaborated on—of these centers will devastate our power grids, our aquifers and wells, and the health of our communities. The AI programs they're used for are intended to replace human workers in every industry that can be automated. Building the data centers might create construction jobs for a short while, and they might even go to unions. We don't know that. But we know better than to trust billionaires and bosses. Those jobs will disappear as soon as the center is built, and the AI it's used for will inevitably remove countless more jobs in the future if big tech gets what they want. These data centers are a scam and a trick on the part of big tech designed to keep their profits rising while keeping us poor with bogus tech. I believe the people of St. Joe County are smart enough to not fall for the trick. We are creative enough to find other solutions to create jobs and bring money into the community. We can invest directly in our own communities and our own businesses without giving up our land and labor to these Silicon Valley scumbags. We can find other projects, other sources of funding, and other ways of making our communities more safe and affordable for everyone who lives here. Council members, I urge you to vote no on rezoning this land, and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lotzenheiser.
Hello, Vincent Voico, resident of New Carlyle at 226 Ziegler Street. I've been in New Carlyle since 1992, love the town, want to stay in the town. But I got to be honest, we started this meeting with a line that said, "Let's clear up the facts." And for the next three hours, we heard a lot of misdirection and manipulated statements and statistics. I myself started off in agriculture as a farm. I moved into business and have electrical, mechanical, and industrial, and now chemical degrees. I also now manage a global company and specifying in refrigeration water towers. And I can affirm that the information received in the first three hours was very much misdirected and misleading. I asked a question—if anyone in this room has ever heard of an SMR. It's a small mobile reactor, or a small mobile nuclear reactor, and they're coming. And you will have them in your backyards. There are already multiple other data centers around the nation, and they are coming this way. I also want to ask about business power. Had conversations now yesterday morning with local power companies about peak power hours and our new power rates going forward. As a business owner—or not a business owner, but as an operator of a global businesses and remote operation control centers, what's that going to do to us or other businesses in the area? If we're talking if consumers are going to see our electrical rates rise, what about business rates? How are we going to run that? I already have a seven-digit monthly electrical bill. If that doubles and triples, what's that going to do? What are other businesses going to do as a result of this when they have to write that bill also, and they decide it's time to leave? Unions won't be here. There's no jobs. They're going to go somewhere else. This is a much larger decision than what we're focusing on at the singular moment in time with the misinformation that we've been provided. Water treatment. I urge you to go speak with the Waste Water Department. Speak with Serena. Talk to her about slug ripans, SBCC wastewater plants. See what she can tell you. I urge you to speak with IDEN in an unofficial manner. They have a lot of information, and their hands are being tied. I urge you to speak with St. Joe County Wastewater. Speak with the Pogayan Band of Indians. They have done extensive research about water in this area, and they know more than anything we've discussed today at this meeting. I urge you to look at global trends, especially what was announced on Monday of this week with AI companies pulling back their structure. And as someone who runs global remote operations, I can confirm to you that entire complex is being run with two people anywhere in this country. I ask you to review this. Say no. Respect the voice of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steven Schaefer, 4341 Cross Creek Drive. I'm a software developer. I'm a tech enthusiast. I think that AI has great uses, but that's not really the question at hand here. On top of that, I am not a fan of these Fortune 8 companies, companies like Amazon, Google. What are they good at? They're good at finding value all around the world and extracting it and shipping it off somewhere else to consolidate that value and that power, not in this community. Think about what has Amazon done to this nation and small towns all around this nation, if you think about that, and what it's done to brick and mortar. However you feel about whether that should have happened or not, are these companies companies that go around and take all of these small towns and turn them into these flourishing utopias? Or do they go around, extract the value, ship it off to Silicon Valley or overseas? These companies do not care about us. We have heard plenty of examples as to how they are going to extract this value and not benefit the community. And I can guarantee you that if you put all these protections in place, like we're talking about with the tariff on the power consumption, all these things, what they're good at is getting around that. What they're good at is not paying the taxes. So we can come up with all of these things to try to contain them and make sure that, oh, you know, we're inviting the fox into the chicken coop, but we put a muzzle on them to make sure that they wouldn't eat all the chickens. But why does the fox want to go into the chicken coop? There's obviously a reason for that. Like I said, I'm pro-tech, and I think we need to do it responsibly, and I think we need to recognize that these companies do not have our best interest in mind. And I want you to look at the—I don't know the exact number, but I think there's been close to 100 people who have stayed here. I got here before 6:00. It's 2:00 in the morning. We've been here for eight hours. And on the other side, we have the person who wants to sell the land, the person who wants to build the data center and profit from it, and the people who want to directly, for the first few years, build the data center. Those are the only people that you see here advocating for it, or the people that can make some money off of it, off the next couple of years. And everyone else who took the time to be here, we—who's paying us off to do that? Where's our gain? It's because we care about this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Hello, my name is Jose Manuel Ramirez Amora. I come from 1001 Napier Street here in South Bend, Indiana, and I've come to talk about my experiences with AI tools. I used to be a former barista at Starbucks, and a new feature that became readily available for my job as a shift supervisor was using AI to help in automated inventory counts. And one thing that I found is that AI is not a perfect tool. It does not make my job to count inventory much easier. In fact, I have to double-check it and count after it just to make sure that the count is accurate. Our CEO has promised that this is a tool that would help aid in our labor, and so that we can divert more attention to running the floor, which it hasn't—it has taken an hour out of my time to run our shifts. And on that same note, my store manager—my former store manager—had to opt out out of a feature that automates our schedules. We are people, not machines, and for AI to schedule us disregarding, like, factors that it doesn't take into account, such as, like, daily lives, like, our lives outside of work—we've been given schedules that do not align with our life outside of work. And so, it's forced our store manager to opt out, so it doesn't work in that sense. And then, another point I want to make is our over-dependency on technology. And then another point I want to make is our over-dependency on technology. I feel like more and more often you hear stories about people forming bonds over AI chatbots. And for people to much rather communicate with those instead of with other people and people of their own community. And I am so glad that many people that have come to speak before me have finally brought up what data centers are here to push, especially as of late. And I'm here to speak against that. And I hope that you guys vote no.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Chris Humberger. I live at 58010 Tulip Road, New Carlisle. Lived there my whole life, raised a family there. I can see the lights from the Amazon project out my living room window. We've had a couple of years of steady convoys of semis of gravel. It seems like all the gravel in the earth went past our house. Speeding right where my kids have to drive. And it's just been a disaster. And I've been, for most of my life, just the biggest New Carlisle supporter. I've never thought more about leaving. I don't like the direction things are going. The size of the development in the IEC is already overwhelming. And every couple of years, here we are at another two o'clock meeting. It's not my first one. But it just feels like a quote I heard tonight. You live out there and you feel like a sucker with cornfields, a sucker with water. What are we supposed to get out of it? Some rescue of another tax crisis that comes along every few years? It seems to me, my assessed valuation is only bound to go up due to demand for land and housing. If my assessment goes up, my taxes are gonna go up. Another quote I heard tonight was, oh, somebody wrote a letter, you know, take one for the team again, New Carlisle, you know? Because it's not just about New Carlisle, it's about everybody. But we already took two for the team, two giant projects that are not especially diversified. It seems likely in 20, 30, 40 years, the technology changes. They go on, companies move on, just like Studebaker did and Bendix. They didn't stick around to clean up their mess. And we're already gonna be stuck with 30, 40 giant buildings. Will we have a use for them? Who knows? But there's not the long-term thinking that I would like to see. It's only about the immediate tax problems. Anyway, I just think New Carlisle already has more than our fair share of industrial rezoning. The people have spoken again. Enough, enough is enough. Not another data center. A thousand acres of farmland gone encompassing the town of New Carlisle. Further industrialization. This is not the direction that this resident wants to see. And it's not gonna make me wanna stick around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Humberger.
Hello, my name is B. Honeyset. I live at 1503 Kingsman Way, Osceola. I just wanna say, when is, God, it's so late. When, when is enough enough? We already have two of these. We build a third one, we get a bit more money. If you vote yes on this, they're gonna want a fourth, and a fifth, and so on. And soon enough, they're gonna take all of our resources, and they won't give us any more money because there's nothing left. And everyone's quality of life is terrible. Nobody's gonna wanna live here anymore. You're gonna have no people to counsel, you're gonna have no money to get. What are you getting out of this? Nothing.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing, please come up and speak, sir. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Tasso Anasasiu, 52501 Walnut Road, Hamilton, which is unincorporated northeast New Carlisle. Longtime listener, first-time caller. Wanted to thank for the long-drawn-out introduction with repeating all the information we've already heard in the past. But thanks for not repeating the word bucolic anymore. I am a steel worker at Iantec, Nine Coat, and I can tell you that all the people there are not happy with the current project, and they're not gonna be happy with the next one. I use the term Hamilton in order to distinguish between the peripheral New Carlisle residents and those who would be, lived directly next to the proposed abomination and will be directly affected. But to be clear, a vast majority of all of township have been very vocal and are largely opposed to another massive project in our area, at least for the time being. Up until very recently, we did not know, presumably by design, who the purchaser behind the impotence of rezoning land was. It wasn't until last week on television, we heard the name Microsoft. I don't know if that's accurate. And the opinions of the commissioners expressing their views strongly in favor of the project. And this means ignoring the Area Plan Commission, the APC. Recommendation of vote of no, the common council's recommendation vote of no. The town of New Carlisle voting no, Hamilton Grove Community voting no. Which are in remonstrance of rezoning petition. Just because you, the leadership, think it's the correct thing to do, it doesn't make it right. Even if you know it's right, or it is actually the correct thing to do, it is ultimately the people's voice that should guide you through the decision, right or wrong, not your own outstanding opinion. You have been elected by the people and represented by the people. Represent the people. If you do not abide by the people's request, it will only reinforce the people's belief that the leadership is shortsighted and self-serving. If you vote yes to rezone, a key concern will be ignoring the APC's overall plans. It begs the question why we even have an APC to guide the redevelopment and the decision-making if the leadership is just gonna vote whatever they please. Another concern is the complete lack of empathy towards all those who'll be directly affected, those who are pleading no.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, your time is up. Is there anyone else in the room would like to speak?
Can he sign in?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Could you please sign in?
Where at? I'm sorry.
Is it right there in front of you, the clipboard?
This guy here? This guy?
I believe so. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room would like to speak against this bill? In opposition to the bill? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to the bill?
Yes.
All right. Tracy. Tracy?
Hi, good morning. Thank you, thank you all for still being here. My name's Tracy Grimm, 414 West Front Street, New Carlisle. I worked on the previous comprehensive plan for New Carlisle. I raised my children in New Carlisle. I oppose this, this rezoning. I'm a librarian, and I'm very curious by nature, and it's part of my job. So when I see the speed at which this new data center is being proposed, and I see that it's a thousand acres, and they're only gonna use part of that, a small part of it, it makes me curious. And so I did some research. And someone mentioned earlier, SMRs. And they're a real thing. There's an April 2025 study by Deloitte called Nuclear Energy's Role in Powering Data Center Growth. And that report predicts that small modular reactors, these nuclear reactors, which can be built on-site, will be a technology available within the decade. And they talk about co-locating data centers, and that that is a strategy. So it really makes me nervous and concerned that we're rushing into this, this cluster of data centers in St. Joe County, and that we're not really considering strategy that, that these folks are really long-term thinking about to feed the power, the power, you know, the power needs that these have. So my worry is that if you pass this, we're gonna be here three to five years in the same room, three o'clock in the morning, you know, trying to pass, they'll be trying to pass, you know, change the regulations so that we can have small nuclear reactors at these sites. And so that's really a, a real, I think that's really on the horizon. It's something that we need to seriously consider. Also, someone brought up earlier that the comprehensive plan for New Carlisle, the town has nowhere to grow. The only direction to grow is north. And if we wanna have, you know, mixed use, more commercial diversity of the economy out there, that's the only way, way and space for New Carlisle to grow. So I urge you to please respect the people and the work that's been, the hard work on the new plans and the maps, and really, really vote down this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak against or in opposition?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Austin Kazinsky, 6228 County Line Road, New Carlisle. But I'm actually a Hudson resident. I'm a member of the Hudson Lake Conservation Association. I'm a boarder trustee of Hudson Lake. And I'm a board member of the New Carlisle Fire Territory. There's a few points in addition to everything that I think has already been said. First, I am worried about water usage, of course. Our lake, Hudson Lake, is refilled, of course, through drainage, but also through, and I'm not well-learned on this, but water coming up from the aquifer. So if that, that aquifer, even if it's not fully recharged, can drain our lake into wetland and damage that. It's a concern of mine. Beyond that, on the New Carlisle Fire Territory, I'm well aware of how, I wouldn't say maxed out, but the amount of calls and the usage of our EMS and our fire services since Amazon has gone in and the battery plant. And that's, that's great, you know? I'm supportive to some extent to industrialization. But I'm very concerned about our capacity to service those areas. As somebody else had mentioned about getting to Hamilton, but just in addition to that, additional calls, additional accidents, we, as of, I don't feel, as a member of the Fire Territory Board, that we are prepared for that, that increase. And I would ask you to slow, slow this and to please deliver to the residents a much-needed Christmas gift. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else online wish to speak?
Yes, I would.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm Jan Servalley, Granger. And I urge the county council to reject bill number 4225. I won't repeat all the great comments made earlier. First, I wanna thank you all, you look very tired. I was there from five till about 11:00, and I have a sick dog that I'm tending to here. But I simply wanna ask that the council take charge of data center question in, in our county and establish a moratorium. Hit the pause button on any proposals for new data centers until the county conducts an objective hard-nose, and I'm gonna underscore third-party impact assessment on Project Reneir operations to date. And again, I wanna thank you for, for sticking it out and your, and your leadership on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would wish us to speak?
Yes, I would like to.
Mr. Kelly?
Hey, you guys, how you doing? All right, Nate Kelly, 11355 Nicole Drive, Granger, Indiana. So I originally showed up to just show support for New Carlisle because they showed up when we were fighting you guys in your ultimate decision for the Granger data center. I know how it feels to have something shoved down your throat. And I think that after watching this, my biggest concern is that you guys are outmatched for the competition. These data centers are coming in with the best lawyers. They know the recipe to get whatever the heck they want. And they've done it. Amazon did it. They got state abatements, they got local abatements, they got everything that they asked for, they got additional. They just keep adding more and adding more, right? And hell, we don't even know what we're getting from it. Who said that earlier? Oh, we don't even know how much we're getting. Dan, you said about the Microsoft project that it'd be transformational wealth. But you don't even know what's going on with Amazon. So that's my biggest problem. Not to mention Bill and, and the commissioners. They get whatever, they're yes-men, right? When have we said no? The best, when have we turned down a project like this? Every time there's one that comes across, there's hundreds of people that, that show up, right? And they all say no, 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 and there's seven people who say yes. And you guys keep voting yes. No wonder why these companies are lined up at your door. Say no, give yourself some leverage. If you're still negotiating with Microsoft and you tell these guys no, guess what, maybe you'll get something. Quit putting the money in a TIF, give the money back to the people who have to live with it. Say no.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Please go ahead.
My name is Sandra Brow. I live at 31500 Chicago Trail in New Carlisle. I guess I could start off by saying, you know what? I, go ahead, give me the tax. I would rather pay the property tax than to have you guys destroy beautiful property out here. Okay? Maybe we could do something else with it. There, I bet you I could come up with 10 farmers that would consider and throw money down for a timeshare to farm this land. Okay, there are other, we don't need another data center to poison our lands. You know, sure, the union's gonna come in, the builders, they build it, and then they're done. And then what do we have? It's a data center. How many people could it, you know, it's not gonna require that many jobs. Development is, we need something that gives back to the community. We, it, it's just too soon. I'd rather pay the tax. Give me the tax, not another data center. Thank you for staying up late. I've gotta be to work at five o'clock, so you guys, please don't, don't rezone. Please, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Yes.
So this is Jesse Davis, PO Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. Several of you council people probably know me. I've attended many city council meetings over the last few decades. And I cannot count the number of times that I have heard the term fiscal cliff from our, I'm not even gonna call you local leaders, because you're really not leaders. In my opinion, you're supposed to be representatives. So our local representatives. And I was very appalled early in this meeting for the gentleman, I guess he was a lawyer, is what you're saying, to come up here and infer that everybody that was posting on social media or talking basically were idiots, and they were putting out disinformation and misinformation. Well, let me stand to correct that gentleman and some things that were said, like about the property tax caps that he said took effect at 1% in 2008. That's a misconception, and that's disinformation. They were put- They were put in place by the state in 2008, but St. Joe County was one of a couple counties in the state of Indiana that had so many large bonds out there from the excessive pending of not only our county but our local cities that you guys got this beautiful 12-year, you know, reprieve from that. So our 1% taxes, while everyone else in the state of Indiana, the other counties, all benefited from that 1%. We didn't benefit from that till, I believe it was 12 years later, maybe 2020. And as soon as that 1% cap came into effect, we started hearing everybody cry fiscal cliff. What needs to happen is we need to get rid of these TIF districts, which are actually slush funds for pet projects. We need to quit passing out the abatements like they're Skittles candy, and we need to let that tax money go back in our general fund. And then you, as our representatives, need to literally tighten your belts. I see new equipment almost every year now within our cities and our county levels and even state levels and above. We never replaced equipment like that on a yearly basis, but we do now because guess what? You guys get an over-exorbitant amount of taxes. Property taxes here are sky-high. Utilities are sky-high. The younger generation can't even afford to live in this community anymore, and they have to live at home with their parents or they live together with other family members. And I do not want to see this night at 3:00 a.m. go through a yes vote when you've had this many people that voted you in tell you that you're an empty project.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Your time is up. Go ahead, young lady.
Hi, this is Kristy Witt. I live in Hunter's Crossing Drive in Granger. Just a reminder, county council, your employer is We the People. Adding a third data center is a hard, non-negotiable burn-the-bridges no. You may have been wine and dined by union bosses or local millionaires like Yara Tony and Jackie telling you how many jobs it's going to create and threatening pop property tax increases, but how many permanent jobs will there be? 150? For facilities that suck our aquifer dry, jack our electric bills up, and turn our quiet towns into 24/7 humming industrial wastelands? That's not a deal. That's a stick-up. Amazon and Microsoft get richer. We pay, they profit. Here's your choice tonight. I would appreciate you guys siding with the people who live here, raise families, pay taxes, or you side with the faceless, nameless corporations that will strip mine our state and county, leaving us footing the bill. There's no middle ground. There's no such thing as a responsible data center. There's only yes or no. Say yes and we'll remember every single name when election season comes. You will be famous for the wrong reasons. Say no and you go down in history as the council that finally grew a set and put community over bullies. The choice is yours. The data center petitioner said he has no crystal ball and has been nothing but arrogant and condescending while he spoke. Regardless of people being incorporated or unincorporated in this county, the tax abatement, if, if a tax abatement is 35 to 50 years, when everyone sees something happening, everybody in the room will be dead. And if we are worried about SEA1, maybe Bill Shalio didn't deserve a raise and you could have looked at saving money for, down the road. So, thank you. Please vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Witt. Anyone else online?
Yes, I would like to.
Go right, go right ahead, sir.
Hi, yes. I'm Sam Johnson. I'm at 1613 McKinley Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. First off, I'd like to address all of the statements about facts about data centers. And I would like to remind everyone that facts don't come from personal anecdotes. Facts come from scientific data and research. And just because a governmental body says something doesn't make it a fact. That is an appeal to expertise. And I do believe that it is unconscionable to allow big tech monopolies to take advantage of our local area with these AI data centers. The responsibility of this council is to see to the protection of the local constituency and make, and not, and making way for AI data centers is a complete neglect of that responsibility. We know from national and local reporting and research that following the launch of data centers, people living nearby experienced depleted wells, higher rates of rare cancers, and astronomical inflation of utility costs. I know that the influx of revenue and jobs, jobs appear appealing, but that, but that's always how charlatans make off like robbers going from town to town. And I would like to point out how laughable it is that the, the petitioner mentioned the prior administration as at fault for EPA utility costs going up because, because of taking away coal plants while coal is becoming a less and less efficient energy resource, while also neglecting to mention who, who is at fault for the SB1 that kept being mentioned for cutting off taxes. So I think that that, that partisanship comment, commentary should be noted. The gains from these short-term, from these short-term gains seem appealing, but once the construction is complete, they plan on having their own small team of out-of-state technicians to handle the day-to-day operations. Additionally, think of all the jobs these AI platforms are used to replace in the transportation and trucking industries, design and creative jobs of all kinds, and the healthcare and legal industries. They make these deals seem great because they know the resources they can extract will far outweigh the costs, and they know that any harm they do to the people and the community will have no recourse to seek justice. Only small cities or poorer parts of large ones are being targeted with these monstrosities. And ask yourselves why that is. It's because they know that they don't have the budgets or the legal team to take them on. Finally, we shouldn't be contributing to these, to the obvious economic bubble that these AI data centers are, and we should be investing in the industries that will be left void when these, when this bubble pops. Industries like transportation, creative arts, and healthcare and legal. Thank you for your time and staying up so late.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak?
I would like to speak.
Please go ahead.
My name is Donna James. I live at 51222 Spruce Road in New Carlyle. We will be moving to 31588 on Chicago Trail where this will be in our backyard, literally. But I wanted to first apologize for my uproar when I was saying no to the lawyer that was saying that he talked to everyone that lived there because he never spoke to us. He never spoke to Sandy Row, the one that just spoke a little while ago. They never spoke to us. I found out from another farmer that this was taking place. But I'm going to, everybody's already said everything that I wanted to say. I do want you to please think before you vote about everything we have said. That's all I ask. Think about the elderly people that live at the retirement home that will be going through this for three years and the noise from the fans. Pennsylvania has, I've, I've studied all these data centers, except for if it's going in my backyard, I got to know what I'm dealing with. And none of them has anything positive to say after they go in. I hear that the people say they, they lied to them, they never, they said all this stuff, but they're not following through with what they said. They're bringing in nuclear generators to help keeping it cool. There's just so many things, and I know you're not going to look into it because your vote is tonight. So my last thing I want to say to you is God is not making any more land for us. He's not making any more farmland. Please, please think hard about this. And thank you for putting up with us. Have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi there. Maisie Cohen, Mishawaka. So I, people have said all sorts of things, and I want to start by acknowledging that it has now been 10 hours, almost to the minute. And that's a long time, but please listen carefully because I'm going to address the character of the people that you guys are choosing to do business with because that's something that I think matters. So a Guardian article came out last year claiming that the emissions from these data centers is 662%, 662% higher than they claim. Let's talk about Amazon for a second here. They're one of the most extractive and ruthless companies on the planet. They recently made threats because they, there were steps to make it so they couldn't legally claim that they were clean or green when they're not. Microsoft? Let's talk about the, the AI that it houses. Microsoft has backed OpenAI. OpenAI is owned by Sam Altman. Are you aware that there's a case currently going through the Missouri courts claiming that he raped his little sister from age three to age 13 hundreds of times? That's who's benefiting off of that data center. Let's talk about Meta because that's who everyone's claiming this is about. Are you aware that recently two whistleblowers just testified to Congress? You can look it up. Google it before you vote while you're peeing, taking a pee break. Two whistleblowers just recently testified to Congress that they were on the research team and that they were tasked with checking out the safety of VR for children. And when they came across proof of sexual abuse and like getting children to do sexual things for in-game money that could be exchanged for real currency, Meta demanded researchers delete the evidence of sexual abuse and all risks. And then they told employees to avoid work that would produce evidence of harm. Now, let's talk really quick about timelines. Name one multi-billion dollar company that has had a large project that happened on time. You can push things back. As soon as you rezone, you lose every bargaining chip that you have with them, and you know Down in Chile, they announced, Google announced a data center, wrote ground on it four years later, and then put a pause on it because of water restrictions. How fast are you letting things happen here? Consider that. Consider who you're working with. Get everything in writing. Everything.
Ma'am, your time is up. Could you give us your name and address again? I didn't catch it.
Maisie Cohen, and I live on Pheasant Run in Mishawaka.
Okay, thank you, Maisie. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak? I see another hand there. Go ahead and speak.
Sharon?
Go ahead, Sharon.
Hi, guys. I know it's super late. I'm really appreciative that everybody stuck it out this late.
Can you give us your address, please, Sharon?
It is 54707 Timothy Road, New Carlyle, Indiana.
Thank you.
This is in my front yard, essentially. I'm going to say just a couple of things. You guys, a lot of people touch on almost everything tonight, but just a couple of things I want to bring up. Wasn't real happy with Amy Drake's treatment tonight by some of the board members. She's a rock star and she represents all the people, and I was kind of offended for her. So I'll, I'll start with that. And the other thing I'm going to say is all the union employees that stepped up, that got in there earlier than we did, got all the seats, they don't live there. These guys have leases on apartments and VRBOs and houses. They don't want to leave because they don't want to get stuck with the bills. You guys don't understand that we talk to these people and they tell us all the things. They don't count. Their voices do not matter. They're not 46552. So the transient people should not have a voice. And then, I think it was a lawyer that talked about how the amount of farmland that we have is insignificant. Well, doing the math on it after the fact, we have almost the exact same amount of people in St. Joe County, his 1,036, 39 people, whatever he said, that voted yes on this. It doesn't matter. It's insignificant because it's the exact same amount of farmland to the farmland in the county, so that doesn't hold water either. If you guys want to do anything, I'm not against progress. I have been up all night. I feel like this meeting was manipulated to be late, to break us, to make everybody go to bed, fall asleep and forget that it was happening. Roads are icy, people left, people didn't come back because it was dangerous, and it was deliberate. Nobody's happy. You know, if you're going to do something, if this is inevitable, if this is going to happen, do something. I don't want a stupid rec center. Don't give them the abatement. Make them, you know, subsidize our electric bills because now they are priority because of security. Make them put up a cell phone tower over on their property because they're bleeding that dry too, on top of the water, on top of everything else they're doing. You guys, if you really care about your constituents, you're going to, you're going to vote for us, not them. Everybody's over it.
Okay, Sharon, thank you. I am going to clarify a couple of things. First of all, many of our union members live in New Carlyle. New Carlyle has a heavy union population, and some of the union fellows here are from New Carlyle.
Some.
And also, also, we are here this late because we want to hear from everyone who has something to say. So we are here so that we can hear you and everyone else who has something to say. That's our job, and we're doing, the din of us are doing our job. Thank you. Would anyone else online like to speak? Last call. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on bill number 42-25. Petitioner, you may respond. Folks, this is, this is simply procedure. The petitioner has the right to respond.
Thank you, and thank you all for continuing to stay here at this very important topic. I'll also say that the reason that we're here so long is because this is not a simple conversation. It's, it's difficult. People are invested on all sides of it, and I think that it is democracy at its best when we are all talking about something. And even if it takes 10 hours, it's important that everyone is heard, both sides, and that everyone can appreciate both sides of the conversation and having different opinions. We have more in common than we don't. Again, a couple of things. One, to my fellow, hopefully bar-admitted associate that went through my personal belongings to get that list of people that have signed up, I wanted to clarify that the count that was given, which I think was 1,093, that was, those numbers were hand-counted. There were some people that signed, there's, and I've given the originals to the county. There was about four, four names and blanks for each sheet. There was a couple of sheets where people signed that shouldn't have. We didn't throw all four signatures out, but we disregarded that one. So the number of signatures that was given to the county exceeds the number that I mentioned earlier, 1,093, because we did not count those in our count to everyone. So those, again, were hand-counted, and I would say the margin of error is, is very small. I mean, at the end of the day, it's 1,000 signatures. And to say that people who are in unions and live here and work here and put their kids to school here don't count is about, is about as offensive of a comment as I think you could say. These people work here, they live here, and when people say, well, these construction jobs come and they go, tell that to the apprentices that learn a trade that can then go on in life and do any number of jobs because they learned a trade. That's a lifetime skill they learn from their apprenticeships, and projects like these give them the opportunity to grow and, again, yeah, it's early, to grow and explore those skill sets. So it's not just a temporary job. It's actually a lifetime job. Those apprentices and those people out there working on the project have lifetime skills. And the project, the folks that worked on the Amazon project, they now know how to build these better than just about anybody in the country, and they can pick up and go down the road and do this project, again, better than anybody because they have that work experience and that skill expertise. Their votes matter. Absolutely. Everyone's vote matters. As we said earlier, everyone in St. Joe County has a right to chime in on this and speak their opinion and to say some people don't deserve to their opinion and to say some people don't deserve to be heard is, is un-American. As we discussed earlier, there are a number of items that are still open to be discussed and to be explored. I have provided a list of written commitments. There was a question about are these words, do they mean anything for the council's edification? These are basically contractual documents and once signed by the developer and the council, if the developer were to not meet those commitments that they agreed to meet, they would be sued. And under Indiana state law, county would get legal fees for the suit against a developer that doesn't do what they say in commitments. We fully expect and we fully pledge to do everything that we state in those written commitments. That's why they're written. That's why they're recorded. And also for clarity, that will travel with the land in perpetuity. So if a new developer comes in and the project sold to somebody else, that new developer can't throw those rules away and start from scratch. They will have to inherit all of the written commitments that the developer is willing to put to pen and paper today. Those are real. Those are legally binding and there are legal ramifications for not following it. I will spare us bringing any more experts coming in, but traffic was mentioned a number of times. United Engineering can raise their hand in the back. We won't make them come up here and talk. United Engineering has been contracted to do traffic studies, data counts, et cetera, to ensure that construction traffic and vehicle traffic will not experience the same issues that were experienced out on State Road Two and other arteries out there. There was another comment that I heard about, well, they're just gonna plow their vehicles through downtown New Carlisle. They can't go anywhere else. Again, borrowing from our solar projects, most of you are probably familiar with a road use agreement. A road use agreement basically states that the developer will use certain truck routes and will also take inventory of all road conditions as they exist today and any damage done to roads during the course of construction will be repaired to a better condition than they were originally and built to county standards. So again, if there's any roads that the project tears up, we will build them, we will rebuild them, and if there are routes that we need to negotiate with the county and New Carlisle, we will do that. And those will be documents that would be affixed to an economic development agreement. And again, that is a contractual binding document that then would be a cause of action should the developer not live up to the end of their bargain. One of the other things that was mentioned earlier is speaking of not living up to the end of the bargain, I've heard comments made that there's gonna be hundreds and thirties and forty. Again, 14 buildings. There are 14 shelves. That is all we are asking for. We're not asking for hundreds. We're not asking for 50. And if someone should come back and ask for more, this body would have the ability and the authority based on the voluntary written commitment that we're putting in to say yes or no. And I have a feeling I know what the answer would probably be, but that's why we put it in there. Another safekeeping from lessons learned and a way to be more transparent with development. With that said, a number of positive recommendations I think came out of the public comments. I appreciate everyone for making them. I would say that I would be open to exploring any other commitments that the council may want to introduce conceptually for consideration at tonight's vote. With that said, I will, I will respectfully request that the rezone be granted for the project. Thank you all for your time, energy and public service to this very important project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Council members do have the right to ask you further questions at this point. Did anybody have any further questions for Mr. Dickinson?
I do have my statement.
Yeah.
I gotta do that.
Okay. So, Mr. Fig, what I was thinking here is, I know all of us, we kind of have this, not really a rule, but suggestion that we don't make a statement before we vote as we vote, but, right?
I'm not gonna do it as a vote. I do it now. I waited.
I understand that. I'm just saying, I think for this situation, a lot of people may want to say something before they vote, right before they vote. So if you want to do that, that's fine, or if you want to do it now, that's fine.
No, I just do it right now, real fast. Wake up, okay?
Go right ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna do this quick. Here, I have a bunch of things on here, but a lot of you people said what I was gonna say. Just a couple of quick things. Area plan, Mr. Dieter, that was eight to zero? Am I correct?
Seven to zero.
Seven to zero. Okay, thank you. Seven to zero. New Carlisle, you were five to zero against this? You were five? What were you guys?
Four to zero.
Four to zero. My figure's wrong. Olive Township, you three to zero?
Three to zero.
Okay, good. Thank you. Three to zero. For 10 months, I was New Carlisle, Olive Township's county councilman. And when we were district, I lost it to Joe Thomas down here, I still think I'm your rep, even though Joe is, but I still think that. It's very important to me, what you say. Very important to me. I was told, nobody on this board though, I was told, Rainey, the people in your district doesn't care about this. That really made me mad. And so I started talking to people in my district, you know, the southern part of our county, and you know what? Not one person, and I went to a lot, not one person told me they were in favor of this. They all were against. And so that's why I'm voting no tonight. Thank, thank you for giving me the time.
Yeah, Mr. Fig, absolutely. Mr. Catan's right. You have a question?
Mr. Dickinson, you alluded to if there's anything else we would have to consider tonight, you guys would consider it?
Yes.
Is there, I mean, there were a lot of suggestions. There's a lot of assertions made by both, mostly for those people that were against it tonight. Would WHP be willing to consider an agreement that would claw back the rezoning if a development agreement could not be agreed upon? If the rezoning were approved tonight?
Okay, so basically stating that a conditional rezoning and if an economic development agreement could not be reached within a certain amount of time, the developer would come back and rezone, the rezone back to agricultural.
Rescind it? Rescind the industrial?
I would say, I would say this. We mentioned earlier getting the deal that you bargained for and we stated that we would do a down zoning where if the development did not happen, those heavy industrial uses that are allowed by right, we would not develop them. Understanding how important this conversation and topic is, I think that it is only equitable for the developer if it cannot come to an agreement with the county to come back and rescind the rezoning and return it back to agriculture as it was.
Sorry, I lost at the very end. I mean, are you saying?
So we would, we would be, we would be agreeable to on a conditional rezone if we cannot agree, if we cannot come to an agreement with the council on an economic development agreement, we would return on our dime and rezone the rezone and revert it back to agriculture the way that it was and as it is today.
Okay. That's kind of what I was asking, if you, if you guys would, would you do?
We would, yes, we would do that.
A few things I heard tonight, you know, which I think would be negotiated in a development agreement was when construction would begin, you know, would it coincide with other construction? You know, could that be stepped in or graduated as other products come off, offline? Obviously, nobody wants to see construction traffic on Timothy Road or Chicago Trail, you know? Could it be limited to one access point on the site? Maybe Spruce Road? I don't know what that's gonna, I don't know what that would be, but can those kind of things be put into a development agreement preserving historic byway of Chicago Trail?
Yes, absolutely.
In ways to preserve it that would be meaningful and maybe help accommodate the bicycle trail aspect of things that happens on Chicago Trail?
Yes, we would, we would do all of those things.
So maybe I think it'd be, it could be a positive, I think, if we could get a development agreement developed and if it didn't, the county didn't agree on it, then you guys would come on your own dime, come back and downzone it back to agriculture?
Yes, that's accurate.
A contingent rezoning.
Yeah, a conditional rezone, yes.
Conditional rezoning. All right. Thank you for agreeing to that. If we get to that stage, I might, stage, I might make a motion that we do something like that. Or amend, amend the, do it now? No? No?
It would, it would just be part of, it's, we have drafted the commitment.
Commitment letter, okay.
And so what we would do is we would just add that to it and that is what the council would vote on. It's already been drafted. The...
Commitments.
The commitments have been drafted. We would just simply add one additional one to outline that, but the other commitments were drafted for legal execution this evening, but that's, that's something that we can change very quickly and then have available for execution upon a vote tonight.
Gotcha.
So I will, I, maybe to clarify this, you don't have to motion for that because we are voluntarily doing that ourselves. So there's no need to, to motion for that.
So that's agreeable with WHP?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Any other council members have questions?
Yeah, it's just, hopefully a quick one.
Ms. Hess.
So this, these commitments tonight are attached to the land. These are the rezoning commitments, not the economic development commitments. So is there some way to put in the rezoning commitments that they, that also, the rezone has to, we have to come to an agreement, an acceptable development agreement with the developer before that could happen?
Yeah, so we would add a line that basically says, and I'm, I'm just kind of spitballing it here, that petitioner agrees that if an economic development agreement cannot be reached by X date here in the next few months, that petitioner will return and repetition the council for a downzone back to agricultural.
All right. Thank you. And for clarification, if this rezoning would pass, the economic development agreement would also require public hearing and so forth. It does not, you know, would not just be an automatic thing.
Yeah, so an economic development agreement would be provided to the council. It would be a public document. It would be, there would be meetings similar to what we've had on the terms, the topics, the details, and then all of those details obviously would be available for, for the public at the time that the economic development agreement came for a vote.
All right. So, you know, a number of people mentioned compromise and dialogue. Okay. I don't really want to have to decide. I mean, to, to decide between economic opportunity and quality of life, I mean, how can anyone decide that? So...
Ladies and gentlemen, please, we're almost done.
So I, I appreciate this, this offer. I do have a concern how it would work. I suspect it hasn't been done before in St. Joe County. I suspect because it requires not only the initiative of the property owner to submit a new petition to reverse the zoning, and then of course it requires another hearing like this, another, another effort here, it's just not clear how that's gonna work. I mean, to me, it seems like there should be a requirements where, you know, written commitment or some kind of process where if, if the agreed upon requirement isn't met certain date, certain time, that, that the reverting zoning happens automatically.
Well, I would tell you that it would be more, more cost effective to do it that way. I, I would defer to the county's legal counsel as to whether that can be done or if when a conditional rezone is issued, it is considered legally a rezone even though it's conditional and that you would have to come back and petition to have it downzoned. I would say that may be a belt and suspenders approach, but would also agree that if it was automatically reverted back to agriculture, that would also be acceptable to us if that's the preference for the mechanism for that re, re-rezone.
And then I don't know if that's happened in St. Joe County ever either.
Again, I would defer to county legal counsel on that topic.
Are you finished, Mr. Rutton?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Comments or questions?
Comments or questions?
Comment, I, I'm sorry, folks. I'm not trying to, I wouldn't want to keep everybody here. I, I apologize, but I feel like I have to make these comments. I can't touch on everything, it's so early, but I want to be, I want to thank the town of New Carlisle. Marcy Kaufman, the president, Allison Abbott, Nancy Pemberton, Jerry Colanice, Will Short. Unbelievable hours, days, weeks, months talking about this. I also want to thank Olive Township trustee, Will Miller, and their board, Tim Creason, Keith Batesal and Bob Middlebrook. Been very good. They're living it. They're here till three, four in the morning doing it and I tell you, you talk about a thankless job they have. The size of Amazon is incomprehensible to most of us, I think. I mean, until you're out there living it, it's, it's not the largest in the state development. It's the largest in the country. It's the lar, and that's coming from the Amazon folks. I asked them multiple times, this is our largest campus in the country. If that's not economic development, I don't know what is. Not to mention this little project we've got going on called General Motors, 3.5 to $4 billion. Not to mention Microsoft, which hasn't even started yet. We have got economic development. I don't know how many more data centers it's gonna take. Are we gonna ever say no to, is it gonna be 10 more, 20 more, 100 more data centers? Gotta quote Marcy, let the dust settle. Can't we let the dust settle? We are, we are in the middle of this development with Amazon and God bless the union workers. They're doing great. I love them. But it gets to the point where let's, we don't know what we don't know. So let's just let the dust settle, please. Reasonable development, diversified. Let's not put all our eggs in one basket. The IEC location is there for a reason and that's my big hangup with it. And I think it is the towns and the townships. And, and Mr. Dickerson, I think you should have talked to the Olive Township trustee and their board. I don't know if you ever talked to them or not, but I think they should have deserved your facility is an Olive Township and I think they deserve to be talked to since the Olive Township trustee and their board, that you should have had some conversations with them. I don't think you ever did.
We did not, no.
No, and I, I think they deserve that out of respect because the facility is an Olive Infrastructure is obviously getting hammered. We all know that. Four to 5,000 people a day. Hamilton Grove, 88 residents, signed a petition against this also and at the, at the nursing home. I believe the entrance to Hamilton Grove is in front of the development. Isn't that true?
It's across the street, yes.
Across the street there, yeah. That's obviously, that's, that's high priority in our book. The mayor spoke about the, you know, being for this. If they're for this, why aren't they recruiting data centers in their towns? And so I would continue to say, you know what? I, I, I think that if you're gonna, if you're gonna say it's great to do, then I think it's great to do in your towns also. And I appreciate everybody coming tonight. Wow, this is something else. This is my third year. Wow, this is something else, this is my third year on it, I've never seen anything like this. This has got to be some kind of record. For you all to be here now is, both sides is so impressive, to say the least. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Tanner.
Comments, not questions, just to set it up. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to do something I'm really good at and upset everybody. I believe the towns colored outside the lines with their 2040 comprehensive plan, not just figuratively, but literally. I believe the county comprehensive plan is flawed, just as we are in our human nature. And a strict following of it could actually create more harm for the town in some respects. I think some people, elected or otherwise, closely involved, should have a better understanding of the New Carlisle Economic Development area and the IEC, how they're different and overlapping. I believe the county economic development representation was a little too colorful in the interpretation of the IEC. I believe the petitioner has been unnecessarily condescending and flippant at times, but so were some of the others who spoke tonight. It's also not our job to regulate the use of AI or the expansion of data centers in general. As surely this vote will have little impact on the widespread availability or utilization of technology or those using it on their phones in this very room tonight or online. Data centers have only recently started to come online in our area and state. If your electric bills have gone up, as all of ours have, it's been by way of inflationary pressure on fuel, equipment and labor to sustain our electrical infrastructure, as well as our country exporting more natural gas to European countries while sanctions against Russia persist, global affairs, imagine that. It's not the electric infrastructure cost bolstered by the large user tariff that does protect us. Meanwhile, I think the answers were lacking by the petitioner regarding the demand side economics of data centers on the purchased power and market bids for generation of that power, which inevitably impact prices for all customers. I believe the concern over our aquifer and sanctity of our water resources is largely overblown. I believe the negative impacts to the Kankakee marsh and our local ecology has long been negatively impacted by commercial agriculture. And our so-called claim to this land has long been exaggerated compared to those native peoples who came before us when we started to drain and work the land hundreds of years ago. While this and other industrial projects have an impact on the landscape, I feel it strong. It also provides an opportunity to reintroduce and expand ecological biomes and resources within the substantial setbacks around these developments. Regardless of the zoning tonight, I'm now advocating for conservation easements to be created for projects already underway. I believe if anything agriculture has as much an impact on our drinking water supply as any industrial development. Barring a chemical spill, which all human effort, I believe, in any development is generally made to permit, to prevent. I believe there are legitimate concerns over noise pollution, both the kind we hear and the vibration energy from noise that we feel. This is why I filed a bill last week that was on first reading tonight to strengthen, broaden and clarify our noise ordinance standards. The dichotomy of residents being frustrated by the delays of this vote is contrasted by a developer who has adopted, resized, restricted and considered additional accommodations in response to the feedback provided by the community members. Perhaps not to the satisfaction of some, and perhaps for some, there is no limit of acceptable accommodation from any developer. This site, while identified for rural management or intense agriculture, depending on which comprehensive plan you're looking at, is inherently suited for a data center in the same way that it's suited for a solar farm or even a small modular nuclear reactor. You may not want any of those, but the specific features, the unique transmission substation and market interconnection point is going to make it attractive for all those uses. There may be a point when we don't have a choice if or when the state mandates placement of one of these types of uses. That said, we should not make votes out of fear. I'm the District H representative over the core and older neighborhoods of Mishawaka and that, that surround downtown. Over River Park, Bercliff Estates and Swanson Park in South Bend as well. I believe the county municipal leaders are well founded in their concerns about funding, tax impacts to residents and dramatic decrease in funding that impacts their ability to provide municipal services. My constituents are going to be impacted by those decreases in services. I also believe it is not our responsibility to solely resolve the local funding problems created by the state of Indiana. And it is time for them to step up and fix the mess they created. It is quite possible, given the state of national economics, that our major development projects in St. Joseph County is actually insulating us from the pains that others around the country are feeling. I also believe there will be hundreds of great paying jobs created and sustained jobs in technology, research and development, maintenance, security and trades, especially as interior equipment is exchanged in future refreshes at these centers. It's also quite possible, without strong, consistent construction work, catalyzing apprenticeships and trade workers, especially at a time when the vast majority of existing skilled tradespeople are approaching retirement, that we will struggle to build even modest projects in the distant future, in the not so distant future. Luckily, it appears we have a couple of years of construction remaining at the Amazon Web Services site. Some exterior and interior construction remaining at the GM Samsung battery plant and a Microsoft data center project which hasn't broken ground yet. In the meantime, I'm also distinctly aware of how much construction costs have gone up, both for commercial and institutional projects as well as infrastructure. Our own county highway department canceled their chip and seal program this summer due to the lack of available stone from all regional quarries because of these major projects. The town of New Carlisle Department of Public Works is genuinely concerned about resourcing the large scale equipment and materials necessary to serve and capacity to maintain the utility demands at the rate of this growth being experienced. The utility may technically be independent of the town, but the two are fundamentally linked and the strain is real, even if developers are paying for the cost of the buildout. I support growth and investment. I acknowledge the fundamental need for jobs and industry to support a community, but worry about becoming too dependent on a single industry. I have, by accident or intent, spent a considerable amount of time in New Carlisle and Olive Township over the past 12 months. Driving on State Road Two and other areas, various hours, various days, spending time in New Prairie High School for my daughter's club basketball games, patronizing restaurants, viewing project progress, visiting Bendix Woods County Park, taking noise readings at various locations and meeting with town representatives and residents. A great many people over the past several months have presumed how I would vote this evening. Who, after reading and engaging with social media posts, listening to my questions this evening or he, hearing this spiel, have any better idea of how I plan to vote? Probably know better than when we started. On the low side, I've spent over 400 hours this past several months reading, listening, writing and engaging on this topic. This is on top of my ingrained professional knowledge within the relevant industry and the development realities. This topic and our vote is far from cut and dry, and I have a serious issue with anyone for or against elected, appointed or layperson who has claimed that the vote is obvious. We don't have the luxury of voting based on emotion, though. When it comes to rezoning petition, this body acts as a quasi judicial body, setting precedent with every vote and operating within an open mind standard and existential risk with every formal statement we make. Decisions based on anything else expose the county to liability. And now, nine and a half hours into this and five plus minutes of my diatribe, I've accomplished what I tend to do best. Be an equal opportunity pain in everyone's side. But it isn't in spite of you, it's because of you and in service to you. This has been a complex issue that a lot of people have spoken on, and I think you deserve to hear the, the logic that we have in making the decision. Regardless of the vote tonight, there are dozens of individuals I personally respect who will take issue with a vote in favor as well as a similar group who would take exception to a vote against. Our decision must be rooted in the five core principles associated with rezoning consideration, of which I believe the strongest point of contention for this petition with tho, within those five core principles is responsible growth. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Drake.
I like to be clear on where I stand and not talk too long. I am with the people of New Carlisle on this, I think it's overwhelming. I think that you have been forgotten, ignored and taken advantage of in the past. So I am voting yes. Or no. I'm voting yes for you. Yes for you, no for the data center.
It'll depend on what the motion is, right?
I guess.
Okay. Councilwoman Hess.
I guess likewise, I'd just like to summarize a bit of what we've gone through the past several months. And I know some of you really resented listening to the representative from the company. However, we have not heard him speak much at all over the last five months. Nor have you heard any of us speak at all during the last five or six months of this. And as Brian said, we've all spent many, many hours doing our own research, going to New Carlisle, driving around, having conversations with people, having conversations with different groups of people, trying to get feedback. So we did hear from people who supported the project tonight, and some of you seemed to be upset because they took seats that some of the people who wanted to express no couldn't have. Well, they deserve to be heard too, and they are not. These labor workers I've known for a long time, they're from here. They live here, pay taxes here, play here, spend their money here. And so everybody, and the, and the farmer, so everybody claims that they love farming and they want to protect agriculture. But, you know, they're very upset with the farmer for wanting to rezone his land. He has an opportunity, and he's 72, I think. I'm 72. And I, I decided in 2022, when I ran in 2022, that would be my last election. Many of you are probably glad to hear that, I don't know. But this is my, I can't even imagine being 72 years old, 20, 50 years of my life farming and being in debt and making no money and having to pour lots of money into. I've read a lot, let me tell you, I've read a lot about corn production, the fertilizers that are needed to provide the kind of corn that goes into ethanol and other things. These are commodity crops up there, out there, and they are dependent a lot on the whims right now of the tariffs at the national level. But they've been always a, a subject to market pressure. So it's, it's not an easy particular life, so I, I just want to have some respect for him as well. Like I think his friend had said earlier, to have respect and understand his desire to be able to provide, have a happy retirement. I have no idea, I don't think farmers probably have pensions or any kind of retirement plans. So he, you know, saw an opportunity and after, I think, talking to the developer, thought it was a plan that would be more acceptable to the community. I think overall, certainly, this is a much more appealing project than Amazon. It's unfortunate that Amazon is, which is a behemoth out there, has really stressed the local community. Onerous traffic conditions, onerous pressures on all of you, I under, I do understand that. I often avoid to, if I have to go to Chicago or something. I, I, I admit that, but I occasionally do take it. But, you know, so I do respect that. So don't think that I have not listened to you. Every time we have heard something, we have taken it back to economic development to take to the developer and say, listen, these are what, this is what the people are saying. Is there any way to make this project provide more community benefit and so forth? So, and that's why it took so long. I mean, if we'd have voted on this project in the spring, we have heard we rushed it through too fast. Then we're told, we waited too long, we pushed it out. Well, we pushed it out because we were trying to come to a compromise because there still are complexities and compromise and nuance in the world. But this has become such a emotional issue for a lot of people. And there's fear and emotions trying to pressure both sides of, of, of this vote here tonight. So I'm tired myself, and I, I also want to say that I represent, like Brian, I represent an urban area. My council district, my county council district represents the southern part of the city of South Bend. And yes, they are going to suffer quite a bit. I think it's at least an 18 million cut to their budget in 2028. This is not fabrication. And Mark Katanzright, council, I'm sorry, Councilman Katanzright and I are the senior members of the council. He's been on for 28 years, I've been on for 13. So yes, there was a fiscal cliff, it was real, and we did have to tighten our belts. We, we tightened our belts for several years to get to where we had, now finally have several, many thousands of dollars of reserves that we didn't have before. But the fiscal cliff was also real because the property tax caps, one, the 1%, 2%, 3% tax caps really cut into our, our budget. And, and it was, to me, it was one of the most wrong headed pieces of legislation ever because, first of all, most homeowners, homeowners at that point were already near the 1% threshold. So primarily benefited business and agriculture more than it did homeowners. But they put it in the state constitution, which means it's there unless somebody's going to take it out of the state constitution. So we're stuck with those tax caps as it is. So that was, that really did create a problem for us. We did have to ask departments not to give any reasons. We did live through a period of austerity, we do tighten our belts. But we have, you know, 1,144 center lane road miles to pave and plow. And that's just the center line, so if you, center lane. So if you want to know the total number of lane mileage, you have to multiply whatever roads we have that are two lane or three lane or four lane, that, that have a lot of traffic. And, and we have 262 bridges, we're responsible for all the bridges in the county, whether they're in the city limits or outside. 900 miles of ditches, that's just highway. That money has been clawed back by the state as well. So the state keeps taking more than it's giving back to the local governments. And Braun even said, you know, hey, if the counties need more money, they can raise the tax, local taxes, like was said before. The cities can raise it, the county can raise it. But there's not a lot of appetite for raising taxes either. But that's how we get money, is with property tax, to plow and pave, to run a justice system, to keep the jail open, to keep the parks running. That's what it requires, to have good public defenders, to have a good justice system, have public health. There are many things that the county does that people don't even realize that happen. It takes a lot of money and a lot of people to do it. Speaking of human, it takes a lot of human beings to run a government, a local government like this. And everybody's just trying to do the best they can to make good decisions. And if anybody here on the council has been whined and dined, nobody let me know about it. Or I, I, I'm sorry I missed that part of it. So I just wanted to put that out there. Also, even though I represent the sou, southern part of the, the city of South Bend, when I'm making decisions on this council since I've been on for 13 years, I don't look at it through a partisan lens or that my district lens strictly. I look at what I think might be best for the entire county of 273,000 people, which is 461.38 square miles. That's a lot, and, and we're responsible for all the roads outside and, and incorporated parts of the county. And speaking of that, there's been a lot of development. When I was a kid, Grape Road, Main Street, Granger, that was all rural, all rural. When I went to visit my grandparents in Michigan, it was all rural. Now it's all paved and it's all retail, gas stations, restaurants and so on and so forth. So this isn't the first time there's been a big, and a lot of residences too, and I do. And I do recall a lot of residences and subdivisions being built on subject systems which failed. And if I recall, Granger was boiling water for quite a while. So that's just my summary of this. And I just want you to know that we don't take any of these decisions lightly. We do our homework, always have. And I appreciate you for coming and speaking out. I think it's important, and I wish more people would come and speak out. I wish more people would vote. We have 205,000 registered voters in this county. And then the last, as of 2024, and last in the 2024 election, only 112,000 of those voters voted. So that would also help our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hess. Councilwoman Shabazz.
I will be quick. I know we are all very tired. Ironically, I would say out of this last six months, tonight was the best part. And I say that because I could hear the passion, maybe some misinformation on all sides, maybe just everything that was said. But tonight was a wonderful part to see everybody just speaking their mind, taking the time, being respectful for 90% of the time. So I appreciate that, that it's four in the morning, that's a different part of the story. But there was a couple of things that came when people were speaking is, something that's come to me a lot is that we represent the people. That was, I know why I was elected. There's many of you sitting out there that have our friends, family, have become even closer friends and family over the past six months of this conversation. So I know that I represent the people. That's why I'm sitting here, to listen to you and also to listen to what's best for the county. And those sometimes are the same thing, and sometimes they may be the different thing. I do agree that it's not the job of our county to fix SB 1. That, I was not elected in the House of Representatives. I don't, I'm not down at the state. I don't know if they're going to fix it. I hope they do. I don't know if they're going to. But I do know that my job is to represent you in listening from the Area Plan Commission, from New Carlyle Town Council, to the hundreds and hundreds of emails that I've received, the phone calls, the meetings that I've sat in, the drive of many hours around New Carlyle to see everything. On behalf of all of that, I will not be supporting the data, or the rezoning for the data center.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shabazz. Councilman Katanzerite.
Yes. Not to belabor everything so much, but I do want to try and make some clarifications of some things that I think were misinformation was passed along tonight. And just to say that we have heard everybody that was here tonight, both sides. It's not the first time this council's ever had to do that. I've told the story before, but I mean, somebody here tonight said they work for AM General. Well, the county council 27, 28 years ago had a big part in helping AM General and General Motors expand the Hummer plant out in Penn Township. Very controversial. I mean, there was homes taken that were taken against people's wishes. I mean, they called it Area 52. There were 52 homes that had to be taken through eminent domain to make that happen. But it was a tough decision. It was very passionate. But we had to make a decision up here, much like what my colleague Ms. Hess said. Oftentimes, the decisions aren't easy. And we try not to parochialize our positions about what's best for my district, but what's best for the entire county. And in that decision, again, the H2 plant, at that time, was in my district. But whether it was or whether it wasn't, I still would have supported because it was a good project that brought a lot of good paying jobs that still exist to this day. Unfortunately, the Hummer plant's not operational, but we do have hopes that there's somebody else coming in there to take that over in the very near future. Much like Diana said, there has been no person or party locally or statewide that's pressured me. I chuckled when somebody said that tonight. No one's called me, no one's made any pressure. I've not been invited to any fancy dinners. And somebody, you know, a lot of the debate tonight seemed like it centered around this being more of a debate which morphed into opinions about AI and data centers more so than about the simple rezoning. Why AI, why is it so important? I mean, on the surface, there's a lot of opinions about AI. I know there's a lot of medical uses for it, medical computing and technology that's being researched. I know when Amazon quartered us, quartered the county, they wouldn't give us their list of who their vendors were. They did say they do a lot of work for the US military. And we know on the national, international level right now, there is this race to get the US versus China and other countries to bolster our AI infrastructure. And I'm believing part of that's for military uses. You know, other areas in New Carlyle that have, you know, happened long before our tenure. In the 1960s, Carburendum, which later became Unifrax, which is now Alkogen out there at 20 and Smilax. I mean, they've been out there over 50 years. We helped expand that a few years ago. Just Packaging, Easy Heat Wirecraft, which is now Caris Reels, Ed Coat, Smith-Reddy Mix is a recent one, the St. Joe Energy Plant. 20-some years ago, there was a proposal to put a coal gasification power plant where St. Joe Energy Plant is. The residents of New Carlyle spoke very eloquently, very unified against it, and this council voted that down. So we don't always say yes. Somebody said we always say yes. We don't always say yes. So that's why there is a gas-powered power plant out there now in New Carlyle and not a coal gasification power plant. You know, and then the investment that was made out there between, on Larison Road, between 2 and 20, to bring in ION Tech and ION Coat, which later became Ursula Middle, Middle Steel, Cleveland Cliffs, now it's called Cliffs. I mean, that investment was made over 40 years ago to bring that industry out there. And it's created good jobs, over 500 good-paying jobs in that plant. And I think a lot of people that work there live in the area. So when we consider things like the data centers, I mean, we do consider jobs, job creation. We do make people that come here commit to things that are going to be something that's tangible or we can measure. That's a metric that, the commitment was roughly 300, Phase 1 and 2, 300 jobs at $100,000. I believe that. There's a story I have about a young man I know who lives in the city of South Bend on Adams Street. He's a young father. He worked for the South Bend School Corporation as a process engineer. And as the story goes, he decided to take a chance, take a leap, and go work for Amazon. His wife was a schoolteacher, and they have this young child. And as my friend tells me the story, he's enjoying his work at Amazon. He saw the young mother out one day and asked her, when are you going back to teaching? When are you going to go back to work? She goes, quite honestly, to be honest with you, I don't have to go back to work. I won't say the gentleman's name. My spouse has been promoted three times with Amazon, and we can afford that I don't have to go back to work, so I can be a stay-at-home mom now. So I mean, there is opportunity out there. I do have a good resource at Amazon, and I'm not allowed to say who it is. But the person gave me some numbers tonight, and they said Amazon committed to hiring 1,000 employees initially at the New Carlyle campus, and they have since changed the hiring goal from 1,000 to 3,000. 38% of the workers in that workforce are from the South Bend area, South Bend proper. They're already, in terms of hiring, they've given a quarter million dollars this year so far to nonprofits and local organizations. And they've also clocked in 7,500 volunteer hours in the community. So some of these groups that are coming in here aren't just coming to take, take, take. They're also giving and helping out our local and regional economy. I did hear a comment tonight about the battery plant that's in limbo. There's nothing that we have been told or indicates to us that the battery plant is in limbo. That's a rumor that goes around, that gets circulated quite often. And Mr. Shalio has to defend that quite often. But the battery plant's under production. It's not going anywhere. General Motors did make that investment, and they're not going to see it tossed aside just to allay anybody's fears. And don't forget, there's also going to be another one of these data centers in the east of the county in Granger. That development agreement has not been hammered out yet. I anticipate whenever that, they decide to start developing that plant, we're going to be involved in that. We'll be involved in making a development agreement that's agreeable to the people of Granger and to the county. So that's something else we have to look forward to. I think the commitment tonight about having a conditional rezoning, that you guys would be willing to give up if a development agreement couldn't be arranged or agreed upon, I think is a step forward on a rezoning like this that's so controversial. I think it's something that could be doable and workable that could quite possibly make both sides as happy as it can be in terms of compromise. So I think that's enough, enough for me that convinces me that WHP is willing to do that, and I will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. Has everybody, oh, Mr. Rutton, you haven't had an opportunity yet. Go right ahead.
Can I just follow up?
Sure. Go right ahead.
You know, I'd like to, I'd like to try and find a compromise, but I think at four in the morning with a county ordinance that doesn't really clearly spell that out, I think for me, the best compromise is to vote against the rezoning, knowing that the petitioner can come back in the future, hopefully when the congestion has eased up. And sometime in the future, we can look at it again.
Okay. Okay, I think I'm the only one who hasn't commented, so I do have a couple of things I wanted to say. First of all, I think there were some really good comments on both sides. The folks who are in favor of the petition, I think a farmer's right to sell his property is important. It's part of who we are as Americans, our right to do what we wish with our property. I think that the tax dollars from these projects are important. And New Carlyle and Olive Township would benefit from that. I think the programs for the students in the trades and tech are important. The apprenticeships, we've heard of hundreds of new apprenticeships that have been created by the unions for young people to get into careers where a young man who I taught US history to, Owen Bender, who has been out of school for, if I'm remembering what grade he was, what class he was in, less than five years, makes probably double what I make as a teacher. Those jobs are important. At 300 jobs and 100K a year, those jobs are important. On the other side, Area Plan did already vote seven to zero not to allow the rezoning. The Land Use Planning Committee did send that vote to the full council unfavorably. Mr. Humberger's comments about the traffic issues, I think those are relevant. I think that it's important to remember that we, the people of St. Joseph County, every one of us had the opportunity to participate in the comprehensive plan. Not all of us did, of course, very few of us did, but we all had that opportunity. The comprehensive plan is a document that was hammered out via the will of the people who are willing to participate. And that document is important. And I would like to also address the claim that we are desperate for a solution because of SB 1. I don't think that's true. I don't think we are desperate. As Mr. Roloff has commented, we are in very good financial shape as a county. Yes, we have challenges. Our police pension fund needs to be funded at a higher rate. We have challenges, but we are certainly not anywhere near desperate. Ms. Sanders made a comment that I actually made to the county commissioners over a year ago. And the comment was, we already have two data centers planned for our county. We need to see how they work out. Mr. Dickinson, I have great respect for what you do. You made a couple of comments that I would like to address. You mentioned that the Hedgecroft Project was outside of the comprehensive plan. That project, according to Mr. Shalio, is around 80 acres and less than a $500 million project. Comparing that project to the project that you represent is like comparing a mouse to an elephant. I don't think the comparison is relevant. How often have we updated our comprehensive plans? Mr. Dickinson said you can update those every year. It's a living document. Mr. Shalio testified that our last comprehensive plan lasted 20 years without being updated. In fact, we do not update our comprehensive plans. I asked Mr. Shalio, would we prefer for a project to be adjacent to or inside the IEC? And of course, his answer was inside. This project is not within the IEC. It is not within either of the economic development areas identified for industrial growth within the comprehensive plan. And with those comments, I will take a motion.
Motion to deny.
I have a motion for Mr. Thomas to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Mr. Fig. This is a motion to deny. So if you wish for the rezoning not to take place, you would vote yes. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
I am voting yes, after all.
Mr. Rutton?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
No.
No? Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
The denial motion is... Seven to, seven to, denial.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, the motion passes seven to two. Okay, folks, we are not done yet with our meeting. So if you are going to exit, please do it quietly while we continue. We now move on to miscellaneous matters. Do we have any unfinished business? Seeing none, we move on to new business. Is there any new business? Seeing none, we move on to privilege of the floor. Please listen carefully to the following announcement. The public is invited to address the council on any item that was not on tonight's agenda. For example, data centers were on the agenda. A time limit of three minutes shall be enforced for those wishing to speak during privilege of the floor. Before you speak, please sign in and give your name and address for the record. Individuals may speak only once during this section of the agenda. Please use appropriate language and volume when addressing the council. Also, this is an opportunity for the members of the public to address the council. Please refrain from directing your remarks to other members of the public who are on attendance tonight. Violations of these instructions could result in the forfeiture of your time. Finally, the council does not normally respond to questions or comments posed during privilege of the floor. I would also like to remind council members that if you choose to respond to questions or comments made by a member of the public, they have the right to respond in turn. And with that, we would like to hear from our first guest.
Tom Rowe, 26160 Lake Lane, South Bend, Indiana. Just one comment to the council in general. Thank you all for, it's been long, but I really appreciate your high level of civility going through this. You did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Dan Caruso, New Carlyle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caruso.
One brief comment.
Name and address, please.
Chris Kozelicki, 2022 Scottswood Court. I just wanted to comment on something that was discussed a little bit earlier, but not the actual... the actual point that was discussed. There do need to be more court line deputies. Court line deputies, special deputies for the courts. They are doing four different jobs at any given moment, and they're often diffusing difficult situations with clients and the general public. The general public gets confused about where things are. It is true, they are massively understaffed over there, and if a public defender is asking for more law enforcement, that probably means that there is actually a problem there. So I just wanted to reiterate what the executive for the sheriff was saying. It is, it is a bad situation right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during privilege of the floor? Is there anyone online who would like to speak during privilege of the floor? Yes, go ahead. Is that, I cannot see the name. Says Hoosier? You have your hand up? Go ahead and speak. I can't read the name.
Can't unmute my, oh, there we go. Okay, sorry, I couldn't unmute myself. I just wanted to say thank you, guys. I'm not going to take three minutes. I just wanted to say thank you, guys, for voting no on this and hearing everyone out. I'm going to go to bed. I hope that you guys get to go to sleep soon. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Jesse Davis, E.O., Box Ten, Two-O-Five, South Bend, Indiana. I just want to say thank you for actually listening to the constituents that put you in those seats, and thank you for voting the right way. I'm actually surprised.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Pleasantly surprised. Have a great morning.
Thank you, sir. Is there another one there? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
We are, we are adjourned.
I knew you were going to do it tonight.
Recording stopped.